We are recording.
And I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Monday, August 24th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We were doing this remotely via Microsoft Teams. And firstly, I will ask Tim Corwin to review the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin with the Planning Department. With me tonight is David Brooks, the Plan Director. Just have a few opening remarks, as you all know. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the Planning Board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the Planning Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the August 24th, 2020 Planning Board meeting. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the middle lower half of your screen. For anyone calling in by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov or use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, we will adjourn and reschedule the meeting for a later time. I don't believe we'll be taking any votes this evening, but to the extent that we do, I suppose we will too, at least adjourn. All votes that will be taken shall be done by roll call vote. We ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website at lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim. So firstly, I have great, great pleasure in announcing that we have two new board members, Tim Tuning and Jeremy Rutter. However, we have a guest this evening, so I'm going to defer introductions by our new members until we're done with the first study item, and then I'll ask each of them to introduce themselves, tell the rest of the board members who they are, and so on and so forth. Secondly, I will proceed to a roll call. Once again, I'm going to do this in alphabetical order by first name, and I'll ask you to just say "present" and tell us whether you're alone in the room where you were attending. So, I am obviously present and I'm alone. Gregorio? You don't see Gregorio for the moment. Jeremy? Jeremy, got to unmute yourself. Jeremy, you there?
Yes, I am.
And you alone?
I am alone.
Thank you. Jim?
Counselor Winnie is present and alone.
Joan?
Joan Monroe is present and alone.
Kathy?
Kathy is present and alone.
Kim?
Kim is present and alone.
Laurel?
Laurel is present and alone.
Matt?
Present and alone.
And Tom?
Tom is present and alone.
All right, and as the meeting proceeds, we'll look for Gregorio. Gregorio, are you there? I don't know if he's going to join us. All right, David, I will turn the meeting to you for our first item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the Planning Board has, I'm sorry, the Planning Department has heard the board express its wishes for training over the last many months, and so we are bringing you tonight one of the staff attorneys from New Hampshire Municipal Association, Stephen Buckley, and I'm going to turn it over to Tim to actually introduce him more thoroughly.
Thanks, David. Yeah, this is Tim. We are excited to have with us this evening Mr. Steve Buckley, who, as David mentioned, is an attorney with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which the City of Lebanon is a member of. And one of the services that the Municipal Association provides is land use board training, and we are happy to have Attorney Buckley here to give us a presentation tonight on Planning Board Basics. Steve has many, many years of experience in municipal and land use law, both in private practice and as a staff attorney with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and he routinely gives presentations to land use boards all across New Hampshire, similar to what you'll hear tonight. So I think you'll benefit quite a bit from this, and I'll let Steve give you further, give you instruction as to if and when and how he'll be taking questions. But anyway, without further ado, I'm pleased to present Steve Buckley. Steve?
Thank you, Tim. Let me just bring up my screen correctly here. Hold on a second. I just need to put... I just need to get permission again to start presenting. Hold on a second.
I see that, in the meantime, I see Gregorio is joining.
Steve, I believe you have the permission that you need. I haven't changed anything since you flashed it on the screen.
I just had to re-upload the program again. Just give me a second. Okay, so as Tim has said and your Planning Directors indicated, my name is Steve Buckley. I am your Legal Services Counsel for the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and tonight's presentation is Planning Board Basics. Couple of things I would just like to say about myself. Yes, as Tim said, I have long in the tooth in terms of working in the field of municipal planning law. I've been doing that probably longer than I would care to have to recount at this time, but be that as it may, in both private practice and within Municipal Association, I would say that is an area of concentration I've had for many years. I would also just point out that I was also on the Planning Board of my town for 12 years, and I'm currently serving on the zoning board of adjustment in my town in the Town of Bow. So I have pretty varied experience with the planning and zoning concepts. In addition, I've been a member of my local Regional Planning Commission, Central Regional Planning Commission, again, longer than I can recall, dating back to 1998, and I'm currently the Chairman of the New Hampshire Association of Regional Planning Commission. So I have that planning background, working with planners on many important questions that are addressed certainly by the City of Lebanon. So what I wanted to just say in terms of participation by board members today, if I heard it correctly, Tim or David, you don't really encourage the use of the chat function. You just have people unmute their microphone and speak. So I'm not going to say "chat in." Is that correct, Tim?
Well, I guess I don't, we usually don't do this. So I guess I would leave that to David and the Chair. Are we going to, that may be a good idea for this presentation. If that's what you'd like us to do, Steve, then I think...
I think it's up to you. If that's not disruptive, then we'll proceed like that.
Okay, well, that's perfectly fine, because what I do at this stage is I point out, if you don't know how the Teams function works, you have the opportunity to raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Staff may have to unmute your microphone, and I can take your question orally, or you can use the chat function. We use this a lot, and so you might be more able to chat a question to me, and I'll try to answer that. So you can use either methodology of putting your questions to me as we go through the presentation tonight. The first thing I want to say, which I just think is really a beneficial thing for all land use board members, but particularly Planning Board members and ZBA members, the Office of Strategic Initiatives every year puts out a handbook for planning boards and a handbook for zoning boards of adjustment, but I want to focus this at this time, obviously, on the Planning Board Handbook. So every year, OSI updates this handbook, and it really is an invaluable resource. You cannot have enough different points of view that are of assistance to you so that you can participate effectively as a land use board member, particularly a Planning Board member. And this Planning Board Handbook is readily available to you. You can download it. You may not have as much need for many of my smaller municipalities that don't have staff that can help do some of the back office information, preparing forms, preparing applications. But nonetheless, it has valuable insights that I think are beneficial. You can download your free copy, and I provided the URL here for you. Before I move on, let me just give you an insight as to what we're going to cover tonight. Basically, this presentation is in four parts. Part one, I always like and feel it's necessary to help land use board members, any member of a municipal body, understand the right to know law in public meetings. So I have a small section, the initial part of the materials on the right to know law in public meetings. Part two concerns conflicts of interest and disqualification. Again, a subject to know about if you're a member of a land use board. Part three is Planning Board statutes. I've tried to assemble, which I think to be the most essential elements of the statutory duties and responsibilities of planning boards, and put them in one place and go through them for you. And finally, part four is the Planning Board handling of organizations, how it organizes itself, how it organizes the process of dealing with application and hearing procedures. So that's the agenda for tonight. It's an ambitious agenda, but I'm sure we can get all through it tonight. And I will just briefly, just for the purpose that you can see who I am, I will have my picture up briefly, and I'm sure it's showing us somewhere on the Teams presentation tonight, but I'm just going to keep my... On one. There I am. Sorry about that. No, that's me, but I'm going to turn my video feed off and just keep my audio on, because I think that will save on bandwidth.
Steve?
Yeah?
Okay.
I'm just having a hard time moving the cursor along. Sometimes in Teams, you lose the functionality that tells you how to move forward. Hold on a second. For some reason, my screen is frozen here, and I can't get the...
Do you want me to try sharing my screen, Steve?
No, why don't you, can you, oh, here it goes. It just came back. Okay, thank you. So let me start again, as I said I would, with the subject matter of the right to know law in public meetings. So the Planning Board is a public body, and as we always say, when we're trying to help educate Planning Board members and land use board members and public bodies generally, as a public body, whenever it meets, there are three basic requirements you always have to satisfy with regards to the right to know law and public meetings. Number one, you have to give notice to the public. Pretty easy to understand that part. Number two, you have to keep minutes of your public meeting. And number three, you have to give access to the public to attend. Let me just say quickly about, you know, meetings and the public's right to access. Unless you're holding a public hearing, the public does not have a right to participate in your public meetings, but the public has a right to be present, and they have the right to record your meetings. They can use it, recording of a meeting by a cellphone. They can do a tape recording. They can bring in a sonographer. They can do any number of ways in which they want to record what they think is taking place with regards to what's going on at your public meeting. But the essential elements, again, of a public meeting, notice, keeping minutes, and public access. Work sessions are public meetings. I do occasionally get this meeting, this meeting question under the right to know law. Can we meet just for the purposes of discussing as a work session without it being considered a public meeting? And the answer is, anytime the Planning Board is acting upon, that is making decisions, or discussing matters within its jurisdiction as a quorum of the public body present, that's a public meeting, and the public meeting requirements of the statute must be satisfied. Clearly, there are other requirements that apply to planning board action or planning board meetings when you have hearings under the Planning Board statute that governs how you manage your business at a planning board, which is mainly found in RSA 676:4. And one of the things I would always say to planning board members, you know, 676:4 is the central statute that governs how a board does its business. It's a very dense statute, has a lot of nuanced elements to it. I've been studying that statute probably for 25 years, and I'm still finding new and interesting things to find to understand my duties as a planning board member or what I communicate to planning board members have to do. So I think that if you find it challenging sometimes to quite figure out the exact nuances of how a planning board is supposed to conduct its business, don't be surprised, because RSA 676:4 can be challenging sometimes to understand. But it is there, we turn mostly to try to understand what are the essential elements of how a planning board conducts its business with regards to subdivisions and site plans. Planning boards have to keep minutes of your meetings, and it's useful just to always be reminded what are the essential elements of the minutes. They have to be made available within five business days of every meeting of the planning board, so you're never going to be able to have an approved set of meeting minutes with an assembled quorum of your planning board to approve those minutes. So you really have to rely upon staff to produce a draft set of minutes, which are potentially subject to public disclosure within five business days, although clearly sometime thereafter, that meeting that is recorded, they will be subject to review, sent to planning board members via email. You'll bring back to the next meeting of the planning board and perhaps suggest amendments and approve them. But it is the minutes that are produced by the person taking the minutes and the staff, which are going to be potentially subject to public disclosure within five business days. And there's only a basic set of elements that are required. And in fact, I will just tell a tale with regards to how one particular municipality I represented dealt with this issue of trying to produce meeting minutes in a timely fashion. Planning board minutes only have to have the names of members present, the people participating, that is, the people who speak from the audience, whom you always should be sure they tell you who they are, their name and address. I'll just talk about that a little bit later, why it's important to get the name and address of everyone who speaks and participates. You should get a summary of the subject matter discussed, decisions made, and now you also have to make sure that the persons who make motions and second the motions, those pieces of information must be recorded in the minutes. I guess I would point out that there was a municipality I represented a number of years ago who would, through staff, produce a basic set of minutes literally the next day after every planning board meeting, and that was their compliant right to know minutes. Separately and independent of that thing, which they called minutes decisions, they would have what they would call a transcript produced in a very detailed fashion, a recording that was taken by a minute taker who would use a video recording and audio recording to prepare sometimes a set of minutes, which, again, they called the transcript, that was as many as 40 pages long. Both were invaluable resources, but the first set that was produced by staff clearly complied with the right to know law. The last thing I would just mention, there is a requirement now that minutes, once they are approved, should be posted in a reasonably accessible location. So under the right to know law, you're not required to post your unapproved draft minutes on your website, but once you have approved minutes, you should have them posted on your website in a consistent and reasonably accessible location, or post a notice where they may be found on your website. Although it doesn't happen too often, I don't know how frequently this occurs for your particular planning board, the need to get consultation with legal counsel raises the issue, how you do that appropriately to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And there are two recognized mechanisms for doing that. The first is consultation with legal counsel. So if you meet with your lawyer, and that could be at a live meeting, or they could participate in a meeting virtually by Skype or a team meeting of this type, as long as you're having a contemporaneous dialogue, you can have what the law, what we describe in the law is a non-meeting. So when a planning board meets on matters within its jurisdiction, and it's a meeting of a quorum, it's a public meeting. But then there's this whole category of things that, under the right to know law, we more conveniently identify as non-meetings. That is, that there are events that are outside the scope of the right to know law. And this would be one of them, because you, as a planning board, the town as a municipal corporation, has the right to have an attorney-client confidential relationship, which allows you to have a meeting with your lawyer and not share the content of that legal advice with the public at large. That's one mechanism for getting legal advice, but there's a new mechanism that came out of a lawsuit that arose out of the town of Madison, Ettinger versus Town in Madison. I won't bore you with the details, but the basic rule was, you can't have a non-meeting unless the lawyer's in the room. And as a result of that case, where the planning board tried to hold a non-public session where they merely, on a non-meeting, where they merely read over a letter they got from their lawyer, the legislature thanked goodness amended the statute, so now under 91-8:3 Roman II, small letter L, a planning board can go into non-public session for the purpose of discussing advice received orally in writing from the town's lawyer, and legal counsel doesn't need to be present. And that's actually a non-public session. I'm not going to go through the details of going into non-public session, but just to say, you want to have a non-public session, you always have to start first in public session, and then you have to vote to go in the non-public session. You would cite this particular provision of the statute. You'd vote to go in the non-public session by majority vote, conduct the session, and then vote to come out of the non-public session, and hopefully you would seal the minutes of the just completed non-public session. Communications outside of a meeting are merit attention for any member of a public body, and I think the couple of things, which I'm sure your staff already do, is to make sure that when you receive electronic communications from the town, or the city in this case, you want to set it up so that no one member can hit "reply all" and create the potential for an improper electronic communication and meeting in cyberspace by a quorum of a public body. So you really have to avoid mechanisms where you get all the email addresses of the whole of the Planning Board in the two section of the email, sending it out, so someone will hit "reply all." And the easiest way to do that, which most municipalities do, my town does it for my ZBA, I guess send an email by the staff, and what they do is they bury the email addresses for the recipients in the BCC, the Blind Copy Line. So it looks like it's just going to me, when in fact it goes to the entire local land use board, and then if I try to hit "reply" or "reply all," it just goes back to the sender, which is the staff. But caution has to be employed to avoid planning board members carrying on discussions amongst themselves by email. So if a planning board member A sends a letter to a planning board member B, and then B sends a planning board email to member C, and so on, and pretty soon there's a string of emails which are, which could be characterized as an attempt to create a point of view outside the meeting of the public body. It's something to be avoided, and the better approach is really to avoid having email communications with your fellow board members, unless it's really limited to a very narrow administrative issue. Is the meeting canceled tonight? Where are we meeting for the site visit? And that kind of thing. But really, as much as possible, confine those discussions to the meeting you have, either here virtually, or at some point, we'll all return to regular public meetings at City Hall or Town Hall. Site walks and the right to know law. I've been on many site walks in my years at the Planning Board in the Town of Bow. Site walks are public meetings, and minutes have to be kept, and the public has the right to attend. This is an issue that has come up not infrequently lately, and that has to do with property owners. You know, a property owner really has to consent to not only allow board members, but also the public to visit the site, and it really should be expressed in some kind of documentation as part of the application process. And if that consent is not given, if the, I've had it recently where a property owner wanted the planning board to come but didn't want any of the butters. Apparently, some of the butters were neighbors. They didn't get along. They didn't want the butters to be at the site visit. Can't do that. The public has the right to attend. You can't exclude people. Can individual board members have site visit by themselves? Well, sure. I mean, if it comes to be the case that the board, I don't know how you do it in the City of Lebanon, but you know, for my ZBA, typically, the site visit is scheduled, well, during the summer, is scheduled for 5:00 on the evening of the ZBA meeting. We go there, do the site visit, and then an hour later, well, we used to be, an hour later, we would assemble at Town Hall and do the public meeting. Now we do it by Zoom. So that's, if that's not working, if you can't arrange that kind of thing, you know, and if it's just inconsistent with people's schedules, or, you know, when I was in the planning board, we did site visits on Saturdays. You know, everyone has got a different way and means of arranging these kinds of things. So, you know, it might turn out that in certain instances, if a board member cannot attend a scheduled site visit, it's okay for the individual board member to go to the site visit on their own. I wouldn't encourage individual members together, coming together as groups of two or three and going to site visits. I think the better approach is either go individually separately, if you can't get to the date of the scheduled site visit, or, you know, try to attend the site visit, or suggest a different arrangement, or maybe just get a report from others who do go to the site visit. So site visits, right to know law, I think the key thing to keep in mind, it is a public meeting. You have to keep minutes. The public has a right to attend, and you really can't exclude the public with regards to attendance at a site visit. So with that said, that's kind of my right to know section of materials that are pertinent to land use boards and planning boards in particular. Let me just stop here to see if there is any questions about the right to know law before I move on to the next section. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands or chatting a question, so I'm going to move on to the next section of the materials, which is conflicts of interest and disqualification. RSA 67314 is, oh, I got a hand raised. Okay, sorry, I missed you. This would be Kathy. Kathy, would you go ahead, and if staff has to unmute you, I can try to answer your question.
Kathy, do you want to try and... Do you want to try muting yourself, Kathy?
Maybe try to type it in? If you can use the chat function.
Maybe Kathy doesn't know her hand is up?
Oh, Steve, she's had some technical problems in other meetings. I suggest we go on and then...
Okay, good enough. So this is really the critical statute that governs the duty of land use board members to be disinterested and remain qualified for making decisions with regards to applications before you. There's really three parts to it. You can't participate in deciding on a matter when you're sitting in a judicial capacity, which the planning board often does, in fact, probably predominantly does, if you have a personal pecuniary interest. So clearly, you have an interest in the outcome. Personal, there's a family member involved in the application. Pecuniary, you have a financial interest in the outcome. You should recuse yourself. Or if you're disqualified for a reason, that a juror would be disqualified to hear a case of a similar nature in a jury trial matter before the Superior Court. The last part, which I think is also key, is the reasons for disqualification do not exclude knowledge of facts involved in the game, in the performance of your duty. So to the extent that you've been an active member of the Planning Board or an active member of the community, your foundational knowledge is really an important element of why we want local land use board members to participate in the decision process. You know your community. You know the people in your community. You're entitled to rely on that personal knowledge. on that personal knowledge. One area that is probably worthwhile noting, if you have a special knowledge that comes from professional experience, such as I'm an engineer or a lawyer or a soil scientist, and you're making observations or conclusions or sharing information that's derived from that professional knowledge, that's something that probably is worthwhile of being mentioned in, in the course of a proceeding. I do see that Kathy says, hopefully there will be time for comments later, as I cannot unmute myself. So if you want to just type in your question, Kathy, I'd be, go ahead and try to answer the question and, and I'll be able to see it in the chat function.
Just to, this is Counselor Winnie. It looks like Kathy was able to fix her mic issue and there's also someone in the audience with their hand up.
Okay. So we have a guest. Her name is Laura Harris Hirsch. Are you, is the board want to take questions from guests or?
No, no. Kathy, can you unmute?
I, I think, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I had two questions on the first section. The first was with regard to not going to site visits with another member. I mean, you know, speaking as a woman of a certain age, we have to visit some very large wooded parcels and I find it safer to go with at least one other person so that I don't end up, you know, breaking my leg in the woods and not having anyone know I'm there. Is there a problem with that?
Well, no. I, what I'm trying to encourage you to think about is, is as much as possible, go with the board and participate at the board's site visit. But if that's just not possible, no, it's not prohibited. I'm just encouraging you to think about, you know, if you're going to go by yourself or as an individual, I'm not encouraging you to have other planning board members with you. You can have other non-planning board members if it's possible, but to the extent you're going to do site visits, either do them with yourself and an associate, non-planning board member, and/or as possible, attend the scheduled site visit, which has been scheduled by the board. That was the main point I was trying to make.
Thank you. And my second question was with regard to non-public sessions, with regard to the lawyer not being present, when you, is that just like a figure of speech and you're still sitting in the meeting room with the public in front of you? They just can't comment? Or would you actually retire to an empty room and have a private conversation in that, that, I don't, I guess I don't understand what a non-public session is.
So let me just, just emphasize the difference. We have in, under the right to know law, there are certain meetings which are outside the scope of the right to know law. We call those non-meetings. So when you as a board meet with your lawyer to receive an attorney-client communication, that is, you're receiving direct advice where you can have a contemporaneous exchange of information. The lawyer is in the room or available by some virtual system like Teams, you can have a meeting, exclude the public, and you don't even have to vote to go in the non-public session because it's considered a non-meeting, a meeting outside the, the realm of the statute. So that's why we call it a non-meeting.
I don't, I just, I thought you were saying there is another type.
And there is another type. It's called a non-public session. So the right to know law recognizes under certain circumstances, a board can vote to go in non-public session. In order to go in non-public session, which is 91 dash A colon three, the board has to identify a specific reason permitted to have a non-public session under the statute. And the one I was bringing to your attention is 91 dash A colon three, Roman two, small letter L. And there it says you can go in non-public session to review advice received from your lawyer orally or in writing. But that's a, that's not a non-meeting. That's called a non-public session. You have to vote to go in the non-public session. You have to have them, have it recorded in the minutes. There has to be a majority vote in favor of going to non-public session on that basis. You go into non-public session and retire either to another room or the public leaves the room. You'd conduct the non-public session. You vote to come out of non-public session and you keep minutes of what you did in non-public session, but then you would seal those minutes. So it's different than a non-meeting. There's two different ways that I was trying to bring to your attention on how to get advice from a lawyer.
Thank you.
So as I said, this got.
Joan, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, you had said that, or I heard the chair saying that he wouldn't take questions from the public. And I'm just asking, will the public be able to ask their questions after the presentation?
I mean, the purpose of this training is for, is for planning board members. I think it, I'm not sure, I personally would recommend taking time from other planning board members as I'm sure there can be quite a few questions. But it'd be up to the chair.
Yeah. Now let's keep it to planning board members.
I, I, I must strongly, I'm hearing all of this conversation about all of our laws that are saying the public has to know, the public has to know, it can't be private. You can't, can't do it without the lawyer or a lawyer paper. And then you're saying you're not going to hear the public. Okay. Just saying.
Okay, Steve.
So as, as I indicated that, you know, you can't have a personal pecuniary interest, but you also cannot have something which if you were a juror, you would be excluded from participation in, in a matter that was planning before a jury trial. But that's how you're supposed to measure your need to recuse yourself. So this is the list that you would find in the statutes. These are the reasons why a juror would have to recuse himself. Do you expect to gain or lose? Are you related to a party? Is an applicant your brother-in-law? Have you advised or assisted either party? Have you directly or indirectly formed an opinion? So these are all designed to ferret out whether or not you have prejudged the case or have some personal or pecuniary interest. Now, just want to mention with regards to this standard, have you advised or assisted either party? It really has to be, have you advised or assisted a party on the matter before the planning board? Just because you have an incidental contact with someone who's an applicant before the planning board on an unrelated subject, unrelated completely to a site plan or subdivision application, that's not going to put in jeopardy your ability to sit on that particular case. But if you do participate, and there's actually a case on this, in trying to give advice to a person who has an application that they're either going to file, have filed, and want to have the planning board consider subdivision or site plan, probably not a good idea for a planning board member to directly have contact with that person and give advice or suggestions. I think especially in a situation where you have a very competent city staff, that's really something that should be left for the staff to take care of in terms of giving advice to the applicant. So a couple of, of the things which I'm sure this is common sense, but bear repeating, a butters, if you're in a butter to an application as planning for the planning board, you're per se excluded and you should recuse yourself. I would also include in that, now someone could, under the law, say, I'm not in a butter, but I'm directly affected by an application. So if your property was very nearby, the subject property under consideration, and one could argue that you would be greatly influenced by the impact of that use on your land, even though you're not in a butter, it may be prudent to recognize, I could be directly affected, perhaps prudent for me to recuse myself in that particular matter. Prejudgment is also another important area that I think planning board members really have to avoid announcing prematurely or before an application, they support or oppose a particular application. Now that's not the same thing as, I'll give you an example. Let's assume for a moment that, and I know this has been of some issue in, in the city and in other municipalities, you know, there are proposals to bring large projects that would be, have large solar arrays. It would be okay for a planning board member to say, and say a letter to the editor, they support solar power. That doesn't necessarily put in jeopardy their ability to judge the merits of whether a particular solar application or array being proposed for a particular location is whether they could be fair-minded and had not prejudged the merits of that particular application simply because they supported solar power generically. So there's a distinction, I think, that could be drawn of having an opinion generally about important planning subjects as opposed to a particular solar array in a particular location. To the extent a member has prejudged a, a case or, or matter to come before the planning board, the better approach is to assume that that prejudgment merits disqualification. Although I would point out one case, Webster versus Tana Candy that distinguishes what is considered prejudgment and what isn't prejudgment. So in the, in the Webster versus Candy case, there was a planning board member who had actively participated in public hearings and the matter had been before the board on four or five occasions and the board recu- had postponed, I, I said that we were going to continue the meeting from one night to a week later. And in between the postponed meeting or the continued public meeting to the following meeting where the board was going to vote, this one particular planning board member spent the time to prepare a set of concerns and questions that were eventually turned into the motion that the board voted on to, I believe the application was, was disapproved. And the argument was that the member had prejudged the case and the Superior Court and the Supreme Court said, no, 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 no. That's a planning board member doing their job, listening to all the evidence. The hearing had been closed. Now the board was coming back for the final meeting to vote. And this board member took the time, prepared their notes and had thought through a suggested series of things the board should consider. That's not prejudgment. That's to be distinguished from, you know, if you say at the outset of particular, with regards to a particular use, there's no way I'm going to approve this application. That's prejudgment and that's something that really has to be avoided. Financial interest in the outcome, easy to understand. If you have interest in the outcome, either because of your investments or the property ownership, that merits your disqualification and recusal from a particular application. Employment, I, you know, I just would say, you know, briefly, if you have an employment relationship with an applicant because you have benefited from a relationship, an employment relationship with a business that's coming before the planning board, clearly that's a reason why a board member should consider accusing themselves. Family relations, this is also the Webster versus Candy case. And I always mention it because I occasionally get the question, well, my spouse is the leading opponent of a particular type of project that's coming for the planning board for approval. If my spouse is the leading opponent, don't I have to accuse myself? And the answer is no. You can have a spouse that has differing opinions. Just because your spouse holds a particular opinion does not mean you as a member of the planning board have to recuse yourself. I see a question here from.
This is, yeah, sorry. This is David Brooks.
Okay, David, go ahead.
Um, just on that question of the employment relationship, Lebanon has a couple of very large institutions in the city. Is there any circumstance where an employment relationship with that institution is not grounds for recusing yourself?
Okay. Let me go back to the Sherman versus Brentwood case. I wasn't going to go through this in detail, but let me do that now, David, because I think this gives you some insight. Here was a situation where a ZBA member was employed by the county of Rockingham. The member worked in the food surplus program. When the matter came before him as he was on the ZBA in Brentwood, the question that was presented, the application was by the county of Rockingham, but the application was by a nursing home, a totally different department than the one he worked in. And that nursing home department was seeking a variance for a particular use in the town of Brentwood. So the issue was, well, wait a minute, the CBA member works for the county of Rockingham, but reasonably that CBA member, and ultimately this was how the Supreme Court ruled, that relationship the member had to his department, the food surplus, surplus program was completely attenuated and unrelated to the nursing home department. They were completely different apartments, different supervisory relationships, and it was unlikely, in that particular instance, the court was convinced, that that person was going to have such a potential influence, be influenced so much by his employment that he would have to recuse himself. So yes, I could see a large institution in the city, have someone working for them in a department that is so far away, so far removed and so unrelated to something that some other part of that same institution is doing, that it would be hard to argue the member has to recuse themselves. Now, I would just say, you know, depending upon the frequency at which you have land use board members who work for these large institutions and those large institutions pending applications, you know, there may be a certain degree of necessity to recognize, especially if it's a very important application, it may be more prudent for a member who works for that institution or some part of that institution to recuse himself simply because, and maybe easy administratively to do that, because you may have enough alternates to cover the, the person who has to recuse himself. I can't give you a black and white answer, but the Sherman versus Brentwood case gives you some guidance on that, you know, when you, when someone works for a large institution and it's an unrelated part of the institution that is seeking the application. Does that help address the issue, David?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Business relationship, I, you know, I just put this in here because it's interesting because here was a case where someone had an ad in the union leader once a month for 25 bucks. And the question was, when Mr. McLaughlin sued the union leader, could the person who regularly ran an ad in the union leader be argued to have a business relationship such that they should not have served on the jury when Mr. McLaughlin sued the union leader for defamation for, for libel? And, and the answer was no. That is such a minimal relationship to have an occasional ad in the union leader that you couldn't be, it couldn't reasonably be argued that that required you to recuse yourself. Again, that, that I think that the point here I'm making is, to the extent your relationship to the institution is very attenuated, then there's not a strong motivation to protect the institution. I think you could still participate on, on a matter, even though that institution is one where in this case, the user was, the particular juror member was buying an ad from the union leader. So if you do have a conflict of interest, what are your options? Well, the first is you recuse yourself. And in, in the ideal world, the, the planning board has adequate alternates to cover someone's inability to serve and the alternate can step in. The other ways are two options here is certainly disclosure, but to seek an advisory vote from your members. So under RS six seventy-three fourteen, Roman two, a member of the planning board can, or a, a planning board itself can just decide whether or not they're going to have a vote to evaluate whether a member has a need to recuse themselves. And that's an advisory vote. So I had occasion to do that not too long ago where the question was whether or not I had prejudged an application. So I turned to my fellow board members and said, well, okay, you were here last week when I said thus and such. And now the lawyer is saying I prejudged the application. What do you say? And, and three out of the four members said, no, I don't have a, a, a need to recuse myself. I took that as a reason to stay on the board. If I had lost that vote, I probably would have recused myself. So that's one way a board member could test. Is this an issue where, or a question where my impartiality could be questioned? And if my fellow board member thinks I should, then I probably should. But when in doubt, you know, we would always argue and suggest that you should recuse yourself if there is any doubt in your mind and avoid the thing that I always mentioned to land use board members. If, and this is important to keep in mind, especially in the Winslow versus Holder in this case, if a member had prejudged the case and participates, even if that member's vote did not affect the outcome, it's going to vitiate, make void the decision the board made. And if you've worked long and hard as a board for weeks and months over a contentious application and you've reached the decision and the case gets thrown out because of, let's call it a technicality, but it's really not a technicality, it's an important issue of impartiality, you're going to make all your land use board members do it all over again because the court is going to send the case back and make you start over. And that's a lot of work. That's a lot of time. That's a lot of valuable volunteer hours. You only have so many people these days who are prepared to do this land use board work. And if they feel like their time is being wasted, they're going to be less inclined to sign up to take another term. So, you know, I think it's an important thing. If you have any doubt, especially if alternates, you know, just consider about recusing yourself to avoid that impact on your fellow board members. So before I go on, let me just see if there's any further questions. I'm going to next get into the section on planning board applicable statutes. And it looks like we might have a question for Gregorio. Do you want to unmute your microphone and see what your question is?
Yes. So I have a question about the, the recusing. And so at what point do you need to recuse yourself if, if, as you said, there's, you know, a conflict of interest or, you know, you, you find yourself in that, in that situation where you're, you're questioning whether you should be voting or not? And what, in what part of the application, what stage, I should say?
Well, well, I, I, let me just set that up in a little bit different fashion. So what, what I think is the better practice, you know, and I don't know, I mean, how exactly how the city sequences the application process, but it seems to me the critical point at which which you really should be trying to make that decision is is that plan acceptance. So we'll talk about this in a moment, but you don't get to take jurisdiction over a plan, subdivision or site plan, until the board votes to consider it a completed application. So I don't know how you do it, but in my planning board, we would typically tee up an application for both plan acceptance and first public hearing the first night. I really think that's the time to make the decision. You know, it's less of an issue with conceptual consultation and design review, but that's when the rubber's going to hit the road, and you really need to think about, okay, now I really know the details of this case, now I've gotten maybe up, you know, many times at plan acceptance, you're getting a preliminary presentation by the engineer or the surveyor, you're really getting a lot of the details, you're finding out more about it, maybe you've spent a lot more time looking at the the staff report, and you really begin to think, wait a minute, I know this, or I know that, or I've expressed that opinion, or I have this relationship. That's really, you know, a good idea to make that decision then, because if you're going to recuse yourself, then an alternate can step in, and they can be fully involved with the entire process. Now, if you don't make the decision then, and you do it a couple of months down, well, a couple of meetings down the road, the alternate who's going to step in for you, you really have to spend some time, if they hadn't gone to the meetings, to read the packet and be prepared to say, I've fully informed myself what's going on beforehand. So I really think it's that plan acceptance time which is really important for that decision to be made. I also think that it's an important way in which the planning board chair, I, you know, when the, there was a case that came out a couple of years ago, Greenland, the Greenland case, and I can't remember the name of the the party that sued. So, but, but the, what the important part of the case was, is that this, this duty of a, you know, a planning board member to, you know, take stock of whether or not they should accuse yourself, but also important to the process is, if a, if an applicant or an abutter is going to challenge a planning board member, or, or multiple members for having conflicts of interest, they have to raise that issue at the earliest possible opportunity. And I really think that's really done at plan acceptance. And I think one of the ways you can address that at plan acceptance is, is, you know, just tell, you know, just outright, I actually drafted a statement, I had the chairman read when that Greenland case came out, and the statement basically said, okay, you know, we're teeing up this, this application with plan acceptance, you know, once the plan is accepted, I want all those in the audience tonight and the applicant to know that the board members who are going to hear this case are the following, whoever was signed in, whoever was there and acknowledged their presence, and they were, you know, noted as the voting members that were going to hear that particular case, and, and make it known to the applicant and to the abutters, this is the board that's going to hear this case. If you have any objections to this board, have any concerns, now's the time to raise them. So if they don't, it's going to be very hard to argue a board member later on should recuse himself. But I think the onus is also on the board member at that time to really make that decision. So Gregorio, does that really give you the answer you were looking for, or the information you were seeking?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So putting, turning now to the planning board applicable statute, this is my own personal view of what are coming, some of the most critical and key statutes that govern planning board activities and behavior. Master plan, capital improvements plan, zoning ordinance amendments, subdivision site plan, workforce housing, roads and driveways, scattered and premature, merged lots, governmental uses of land, offsite exactions. I'm going to cover all of these with, in some detail, but I think these are the essential elements of which kind of, kind of tell us what are the substantive authorities and obligations of a planning board. The master plan, I would just say, I'm sure you have a very good master plan, it's been, I'm sure thoroughly updated and maintained by your planning staff. Generally speaking, it is, it is suggested, well, not mandatory, the planning board, that master plans be updated every five years. And the law only says you have to have two elements of a master plan in order to have a zoning ordinance. So if you didn't know the way it works in New Hampshire, in order for a municipality to have a zoning ordinance, it has to have a planning board, and the planning board has to adopt the mandatory sections of the master plan, the vision section and the land use section. And those are prerequisites to adopting a zoning ordinance. And then there are many other elements that could be suggested as optional content for a master plan, transportation, community facilities, economic development, an array of additional areas. You have to have those two sections in order to have a master plan and then have a zoning ordinance. Again, it is recommended that master plans be adopted and updated every five years. Capital improvement plan is another, an important element of the planning board's authority. I don't know how your city organizes the CIP process. Many larger municipalities have gone the way of having a capital improvement committee made up of those who are appointed by the the city council or the select board. I was on the planning board when the town decided to get rid of the CIP authority, the planning board, and have the town meeting do it, have the town meeting assign, have the select board create and appoint a CIP committee. I don't think I was very happy about that, because I kind of think the CIP process was an important one for the planning board to do. But there are two particularly, absolutely appropriate ways to have information gathered about capital improvement projects, and certainly how the capital improvement plan would inform ways in which the municipality might do savings accounts, known as capital reserve funds, to help set aside the dollars in a rational way to help pay for important capital improvements in the future. Couple of things about the CIP, it is not mandatory, it is simply a guide to the budgeting process. And it is not a basis to deny subdivision applications. It is information, but it doesn't drive the decision-making process with regards to subdivisions and site plans, but it is a prerequisite to having an impact for your ordinance or growth management. Although growth management is probably a dirty word these days, it is prerequisite to those, both of those forms of additional elements of municipal land use regulation. Zoning amendments, I recognize this is all necessarily applicable to a city, because I'm referring to a fact of a town meeting and the town clerk, but ultimately, zoning amendments are proposed by the planning board, and then in your city, they would be adopted by the city council. The city council can also propose zoning amendments, but the planning board has to have hold at least one public hearing on those zoning amendments. And if they're substantively modified, you have to have another public hearing 14 days after that modification, and eventually they get delivered for a final adoption by your city council. I would assume, and I'm, I would, I would say that this is required, that you have a petition zoning amendment process, so people can petition zoning amendments. So there's really three ways zoning amendments occur. They're proposed by the planning board, they're proposed by the city council, or they are petitioned, but ultimately, they are all adopted by your city council. Subdivision and site plan review, this is really the key elements of your authority. Couple of things I always like to say about subdivision approval, under RSA 674:35, the planning board can require preliminary review of subdivisions. If you want to require every applicant to have a conceptual consultation with your planning board, your city council has to adopt a provision under RSA 675, 674:35 that says it will be required to have conceptual consultation. I absolutely think that's the best way to make sure good planning occurs is through conceptual consultation. But ultimately, the subdivision approval process is to approve plats and approve streets and approved utility facilities and services that will be installed by the developer. Site plan review is obviously a little different, it's designed to allow the board to approve development or change or expansion of use for non-residential uses or for multifamily dwellings. I'll mention this a little bit later, but I'll just say it here. One of the ways in which you can manage your site plan review process, number one, you can delegate, the city council could delegate the approval of minor site plans, which you would want to define to a minor site plan review committee, and I'll discuss that a little bit later. But the other way I think that's important to manage site plan review is to say, below a certain threshold, we're not going to require a site plan review. So if you're not adding more than a certain number of dwelling units, or if you're not adding a certain number of square feet of additional floor area for a residential or a commercial or industrial building, we're not going to require a site plan review. That is, you're basically saying there are certain de minimis activities that don't require a full site plan review process and just require a building permit. Workforce housing.
Steve, may I stop you there?
Sure.
We've recently organized a a development regulation subcommittee, which is to review all of our regulations. And it's just bringing up a whole bunch of questions. So for instance, in the last year, we've had one applicant who wanted to convert office space into apartments. We had an applicant who wanted to convert a house into apartments, without any changes to the exterior of either site. Is that the sort of thing you're saying? We could change our stuff? I guess the question I'm really asking is, is there a standard in the state, or are all hundreds of towns across the state living with regulations that can vary enormously from one to another? Is there a standard that we could go to from time to time to say, does this make sense or not make sense?
Well, if we're talking about a, making a decision under the statute that there's a de minimis amount of activity that doesn't require a site plan review, I, I don't think I can give you a rubric that says, here is when you should require a site plan review, but over here, it's not necessary. I mentioned it because I literally got a question like this yesterday, where the ZBA, the land use coordinator for a particular municipality, wanted to know, well, we have this building that was a commercial use, they went to the ZBA and got permission to convert the commercial use to three dwelling units. Well, literally, they were one dwelling unit over the requirement that whenever you have two, two or more dwelling units, more than two dwelling units, excuse me, you have to have site plan review. And I said to her, you know, if the project is going to have just one, three dwelling units, and, and they've got their variance from the ZBA, I don't see the merits of having site plan review. I think you really, when you're trying to decide if you're going to have such a regulation, a threshold below which site plan review isn't necessary, it really has to be based upon some reasoned assessment, such as, is, is there a traffic count that's coming in out of the driveway that may trigger the necessity for, say, let's say if it's on a state highway, is it going to, is the use going to have to get a modified driveway permit from the DOT? That might suggest to you, if they have to get a modified driveway permit, they better go get site plan review from you. You would also probably want to know, to what extent is the change going to modify the impervious surface? So if you have more impervious surface, you can have more runoff, and you're going to have more need for drainage. So I think it really has to derive from, you know, to what extent is the activity going to have an impact on public health, safety, and welfare? I would like to be able to tell you, you know, you know, are there really trigger points? But I think those two would be a starting point. Is the person going to have to get a new driveway permit from DOT, or is the person going to have to get, have X amount or more of impervious surface driving a need for, you know, you know, when someone changes the impervious surface, you're going to need to have perhaps new drainage calculations. You're not going to get drainage calculations from a building permit, you're going to need those from a professional engineer, and that only happens at site plan review. So those are kind of the things I think you should think about using to develop perhaps thresholds. And I'm assuming that's kind of the, the direction of your question.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Workforce housing statute, not going to spend a lot of time on it, but keep in mind, we have this statute, it has been in force since 2000, and I want to say 2010. I know that the New Hampshire Housing is coming up with a report in the near future, it's going to be done by Mark Fugere, which is an update of where we stand with, with regards to the workforce housing statute. It's similar to other statutes we have in the RSAs. There's a similar statute that says if you are residential, if you have zoning, you have to allow manufactured housing in a certain number of parts of your, of the area's zone residential. This is similar. It basically says you have to allow workforce housing in a majority of the areas that are zoned for residential purposes in your community. And there's a definition of what workforce housing is, and what the, the housing is a, that is for sale, and housing that's rental housing. You know, I guess what I always encourage municipalities is to check in with your local regional planning commission, regional planning commissions are required to do a housing needs assessment every five years, that housing needs assessment should be used as a guide, you know, are we meeting our obligations to provide workforce housing? And whether or not you would need to consider changes or modifications to your land use regulations to be more accepting to workforce housing. The innovative land use control statute is also another important element of the substantive thirty of the planning board. So you may have thought the planning board is just a planning agency, but the planning board can also be a zoning agency. In this statute, RSA 674:21, I think the legislature smartly decided, in certain instances, it makes sense to let the planning board have certain authority to control uses of land beyond just subdivision and site plan, but also control it through innovative land use control, such as, there are a lot of municipalities I've represented that put together performance zones. They want to improve a certain strip of land, they create a performance zone, they say, within this performance zone along this state highway, within a certain depth, we will do trade-offs with an applicant, so that if they want to have a taller building, they have to set the building farther back, if they want to have a, a building with not as much height, they can move it forward, so that the planning board can actually modify dimensional requirements, landscaping requirements, any number of things which are normally reserved for the zoning board of adjustment, the planning board can do it. So it's called an innovative land use control. Many planning boards in the state also have innovative land use control over, over Thuxley's wetlands. So instead of having the ZBA grant a wetland special exception, it's the planning board that does it. Now, there's a lot of reason why that makes sense. We converted that system in our town in Bo to have the planning board do wetland special exceptions, because we were the ones who were handling the subdivision application, and here's the applicant with the road that was going to go through that stream, why not make sure that we deal with the design of that stream contemporaneous with whether or not we're going to grant a certain amount of a special exception for a use within that zone, so, within that particular wetland? So it's a good idea to have that combined authority, and this is one way you can do that through innovative land use control. I hear someone trying to ask a question, I think. Bruce, was that you again?
No, no, it wasn't.
Okay. Okay, so innovative land use control.
This is Joan, I think it was Kathy.
No. Joan.
Pardon me?
I think it was me, Laurel.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for helping us with this.
Yes.
With respect to the innovative land use program, is that, does that always have to be raised or proposed by the planning board or the planning staff? Can it be requested by an applicant?
In order to employ the innovative land use control statute, you have to adopt an amendment to your zoning ordinance. So the staff would propose an amendment to the zoning ordinance, say, henceforth, in order to build in a wetland or get permission to build on the wetland buffer, you have to get a conditional use permit from the planning board. So it has to be a zoning amendment, adopted by your city council, and once it's in the zoning ordinance, then the authority to grant that permission is vested in the planning board, that particular element of, of the, the form in which that use can take, undertake activities. In this particular instance, my example is in a wetland area. So it's a zoning amendment, you can't do it until the zoning amendment is adopted by the city council.
Thank you.
I always feel it's worthwhile just to mention, you know, the kind of unique responsibility the planning board has over things that may become public streets. So the planning board approves subdivision roads, site plan roads, you establish road construction standards. In your regulations, you set forth what you think to be the minimum necessary requirements for the construction of a roadway that is going to at some point be proposed for acceptance by your city council as a public road. And I, and I would hope, I expect, I'm sure this is true, there, there's a meeting of the minds between your public works department, the planning staff, and the planning board, you know, what are the essential elements of how a road should be built, depending upon whether the road is an arterial road, or collector road, or, or a residential road, or one used for industrial purposes? So all of these things are suggestive of how the road construction standards should be addressing those particular uses. Planning board also has the ability to establish minimum completion standards. If you've approved a 10-lot subdivision, and there's a road going in, you can require the road be up to a certain level of completeness before home occupancy can take place, before someone get an occupancy permit. And then lastly, and certainly critical to the process as part of the approval, you've approved a subdivision, and now you're, you said that the project is going to have to build 1,000 feet of road at, what, $200? a thousand feet of road at what $200 a linear foot? I don't know if that's a correct number, Tim or planning staff, but you have to come up with a number that represents the cost for building that road. And typically you'd want to get that, the performance bond security at hand before the plan is recorded at the registry of deeds. So these are certain essential ways in which the planning board controls the elements of a project and how it will impact on your infrastructure, the future infrastructure that'll become part of what has to be maintained by the city and also paid for by the taxpayers. I also find it helpful to mention this concept that I kind of developed when I was doing, you know, planning and zoning work for my municipality. Something called acceptance vesting. And you wonder, well, what does that mean? Well, what it means is once we approve a plan, excuse me, once we accept a plan as a completed application, there is a law 67612 Roman 6 that says the rules for that plan cannot change while the plan is before the board. Because while the plan is before the board, the applicant has an expectation. I'm not going to have the subdivision or site plan regulations or zoning ordinance change on me. So while I'm doing all this work, getting the plan approved, suddenly the rules change and I've got to modify my approval or a certain number of lots. So this concept is embedded in 676:12. It's called acceptance vesting. Once the plan has been the subject of notice, you know, you're not going to be able to change or modify how those, the regulations apply to that particular application because it's, you're fixed. Even though the regulations might change after plan acceptance, the rules that were in effect at the time the plan was accepted, those are the rules that were governed that plan. And that also carries forward RSA 67439 because once the plan is approved and recorded, the plan is also exempt from subsequent changes in zoning and planning regulations for up to five years and then could be permanently if the project is substantially completed. So acceptance vesting is an important concept that governs the rules of the road for that particular plan once the plan is a completed application. Yes, go ahead, Joan.
Joan. But if the applicant decides to change something, that's totally allowed, correct?
Well, the applicant, he or she can change what they want to do along the way. But the town can't, the city can't do is say, you're going to be subject to new regulations we're proposing. You're only going to be subject to the regulations in effect at the time of plan acceptance. That's really the important time. And that's why plan acceptance is so important because this concept of acceptance vesting. And then I see, is that Kathy again? Kathy, you have a question?
I do. We've had projects before us that are subject to a prior version of our ordinances. And one of the challenges being a board member is paging back and forth, trying to be familiar with the current ordinance, but then having to remember that this project is governed by different rules. You have any suggestions on the most, the easiest way to handle something like that?
I would just confess, and that's not what you want to hear, but it is the answer I have to give you. This concept of vesting from regulations and if, that are adopted after a plan is approved can be bedeviling. And trying to apply the rules to each application at a different point in time can be difficult for a board. I think the simplest way to understand it is, you know, once the plan is accepted as a complete and once the plan is recorded according to its terms and once the project has been substantially complete, even though the rules today say you have to have two acres minimum lot size for a single family home. This project was approved under the old rules and that approved plan is governed by those rules which were in effect at the time. And yes, it can be a challenge to say, okay, wait a minute. This was a plan was approved in 1995 and they substantially completed it by the year 2000. So they're vested for many changes in the subdivision regulations, the site plan regulations or zoning ordinance, you know. So even though now you have different requirements, say with slopes or soils or wetlands, you can't apply those rules to that project. And so you really have to be cognizant, that's kind of a fixed right to be able to complete the project and use it according to the rules of the time. And I wish I had a way to help you keep track of where you are. I think the one thing that I found when I was a lawyer for a town, I had to have the town send me the zoning ordinance for that particular town. And I had a binder of all the zoning ordinances for a period of 20 years. And as I needed to, I would be able to refer back to a zoning ordinance in effect at a particular time and figure out, ah, these are the rules that were in effect when that plan was approved. Sometimes you need to have that kind of historical information so you can determine, you know, what were the rules that will apply to this particular project? So that's my answer. And I know it's not the, it can be challenging, but that's really what this law requires us to do and also 67439. Yes, Joan.
Thank you. This is a question for our planning department. Do we have a place online where we can look up older versions? Because it just seems to me that whenever I've looked up the regs, it's always the most current. So do we have a place where we can look up the older, you know, the older ones?
The short answer, this is David. The short answer is no. We keep the most current set of regulations posted for people who are seeking to consider an application. If somebody, if a board member or an applicant for some reason needs an earlier set, they really need to contact the staff. Because we don't, we don't keep those online where people could get confused by grabbing the wrong set of regulations when they're wanting to put together an application.
We don't have some kind of deep, deep internet where we could look up old ones.
Not at the moment, which is not to say it might not be coming. That capability may be coming.
Okay, thank you.
Driveways are an important element of the planning board's authority, although most planning boards don't directly manage the driveway permitting process. I mean, the planning board has the authority to adopt driveway regulations. And the connection between a private use and the public use, which is the driveway, it's a really important connection. Managing that driveway correctly is an important way you protect your, your public infrastructure. But most instances, the planning board might adopt the regulations, but the permit issuance is done by a road agent or a public works department. Although the planning board, I think this is the key thing that I think people sometimes miss under the statute. A planning board or the town has continuing authority over any driveway, even if that driveway never got a permit from the town. You have the authority to step in and say, we may have not given you a permit for that driveway, but your driveway is a problem and you've got to fix it and order the property owner to fix the driveway. So I think it's an important element of the planning board's authority. It's something to always keep in mind. Planning boards have the authority to prevent scattered and premature development. And I see a question here from.
Yeah, this is, sorry, this is David Brooks again.
Yeah, hi, David.
With respect to that driveway and the continuing authority, is it, is it limited to say a physical concern where it's a gravel driveway that continually washes out into the main road? Or could it, could it be more traffic movement related? Or is it either or both?
Well, let me read the statute to you. What it says is if any such access is or becomes a threat to the integrity of the highway or a hazard to the safety of the traveling public by reasons of siltation, flooding, erosion, frost action, vegetative growth, improper grade, failure of any covert, traffic control device, drainage structure, or any other feature, you could order the person to fix it. So that's very broad. It has, you know, so if, you know, if there's a sudden way in which that driveway is creating a traffic hazard, not necessarily due to the physical way in which the elements of the driveway are arranged, but itself in terms of the driveway, you can say, we've got a hazard, you've got to fix it now. And especially is the case with regards to DOT permits. DOT is going to step in and make them fix a driveway that has a sudden increase and traffic counts going ingress and egress. So it's a very broad authority and it would certainly include, you know, safety hazards which are discovered, not just the fact that the driveway has got a slope that's casting more soil or siltation onto the adjacent roadbed.
Thank you.
Planning boards have the authority to prevent scattered and premature development. It isn't authority that is as commonly used today, but it always is worthwhile to remember this unique ability of the planning board to say, this particular project, the way I would say it, is a peek and a poke or a skunk in a garden party. So if a project is so scattered and premature, I'm, someone is trying to drop a 20 lot subdivision in a distant part of the community, far away from your infrastructure, on a road that's not going to be able to handle the traffic, that project might be scattered and premature because of lack of water supply, drainage, transportation schools or other types of municipal infrastructure. So a planning board has that ability to say, no, in this particular instance, your project is scattered and premature. Or the planning board might say, okay, we're prepared to approve your project, but that particular road is not scheduled in our CIP for improvement, which you have to do because the road's going to carry too much traffic to support its geometric design. So your option is to either pay the municipality share for that improvement or wait until we've scheduled that particular road for improvement under our CIP plan. Scattered and premature authority is an important element of that planning authority exercised by a planning board. Governmental uses of land, I, you know.
Steve, sorry.
Yep.
It's Bruce. You mentioned schools. Lebanon has city administration and a very separate school board. And when we have impact studies or other information from an applicant, they will contain information regarding potential number of children going to schools at different ages and all of that sort of thing. But we constantly find that very difficult to tie into anything practical because the school isn't represented in any way within our deliberations. Any thoughts on that issue?
I, well, I guess I, I faced that before in my municipality. And what we discovered is when the planning board did the CIP by itself, the school board never participated. But when the, when the, when the select board and the town meeting voted to have a capital improvement planning committee made up of an array of different people, including the school board, they began to participate. And then we began to get serious information from the school about potential improvements to the public school system, enlargements and costs for bond, improvements in costs that were going to be passed on to the taxpayer. So I guess I would say this. There has to be an engagement. School authorities sometimes can be less inclined to connect the concerns that you have as a planning board with their concerns. But if there was a way to connect them and certainly the ways in which your, the capital infrastructure for the schools, that's a critical part of the job that a school board has to do. If you connect them as we did in Bow to the capital improvement planning committee, maybe they'll begin to see the larger picture and how, and how that picture paints an important story for the information you need or some of the elements of the decision you have to make with regard to approving projects. You know, you know, there are a lot of ways in which you can, you can look at planning statistic to determine what is the likely number of school age children that'll arrive at a school depending upon, you know, number of bedrooms in a particular project that's being proposed for subdivision approval. You know, that's just kind of sociological data and also planning data. But I think, you know, my experience is I think there's a real need to connect the school people, the school committee, the, you know, the teachers, the teachers, getting them connected with understanding how it's important to the planning board, especially with regards to capital improvement planning, how they connect to understand why you need that information. And maybe you'll get better information for your decisions. I'm hoping that kind of gives you an insight of how I look at the issue.
It's difficult. Schools are not linear. They're step. So we have a project that comes in and says there are going to be 50 more children. Is that going to tip something over? Does that lead to some debate about premature and scattered? Now fortunately, we haven't had that type of magnitude, but that's the sort of issue.
Noted. And I think that, you know, I would hope that maybe in the CIP planning process, that kind of understanding is better shared between the school and the planning of people in your community, the planning department so that, you know, you're not surprised by a conclusion or the school wouldn't be surprised or understand how a particular project may create a shortage and a necessity for, you know, improvements. I like then that also might tie into, you know, does the city of Lebanon have a school impact fee system? Where you charge for the future cost of improving capital infrastructure for the schools? But that's really a separate subject that, don't want to get too far down that road on that issue.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Governmental uses of land, I mentioned it because there are governmental uses in your community. They are uses that are exempt from zoning regulations. So the town itself, the city itself, the county, the state of New Hampshire is not, and the federal government for that matter is not subject to your land use regulations. So this statute is meant to ensure if a project of a governmental nature is going to occur, the governmental use has to tell you beforehand. And then your city council can request a public hearing, which can be done by the city council or can be done by the planning board, where you can at a minimum give non-binding recommendations to the governmental land user. These are the things we think you ought to think about and as you go forward with your project in the future.
Question?
Yep.
On that, does that apply to federal as well as state governmental uses?
It does.
Interesting. Thank you.
Sorry. The final statute I want to mention in this section is offsite exactions. Municipalities, the city has the power to adopt an impact fee ordinance and require developers to pay their fair share for future infrastructure costs made necessary by their particular project. And it could be a array of number of different things. I'm not going to go through the statute in particular. I mention this one because even if you don't have an impact fee ordinance or even if you do, you can still charge for offsite exactions. These are particularized necessary capital improvements this particular project makes necessary. That's, there's the statute refers to and the case law suggests that it has to be a rational nexus to the needs created by and the capital infrastructure is going to serve that needs to be improved by a project that is being proposed in your community. Under the offsite exaction authority where you're actually going to say, you have to put an XL or a D cell lane in, or you have to put a light in or improve drainage. Your ability to impose that as a condition of approval is limited to highway drainage, sewer and water upgrades pertinent to that development. So as long as one of those categorized forms of capital improvement, the planning board has the power to say, we're going to approve this plan subject to that particular requirement as an offsite exaction. So that concludes that section. Before I move on, I just want to see if there's any questions about the planning board statutes that, and again, this is my personal view of the key ones that I've covered here. Yes, go ahead, Joan.
I'm still confused about the master plan. It's listed in, you've listed it in the applicable statutes. And so it's not clear to me. Are you saying that, that, that the visions section of it does have, that we as planning board members should, should use that as, as parameters for judging an application or that's confusing to me?
All right. So a master plan is a vision for how you want your community developed. And the vision is important, the vision section is an important part of that using, you know, the future view of how your community will look like in the future, the vision section. A master plan should not be used to say yes or no to a particular project because it really isn't that particularized. I mean, it's general guidance. It's guidance to how zoning might be shaped to fit the expectations of the community which are expressed in the master plan. But the master plan is not, would never be. But the master plan is not, would never be, you could, you could not do the following. We're going to deny this site plan because it's inconsistent with this chapter of the master plan. That would not be appropriate. The master plan can be a guidance that could be one of many factors that might go into a decision, but it would certainly not be the sole reason why an application would be denied. That's not the purpose of a master plan.
Okay, thank you.
So now I'm going to turn to the last section, which I'm going to, I'm sure, accomplish and be able to complete this, this presentation by 8:30. This section, I, I would call the planning board organization, application and procedures. And I apologize, but some of my slides are not particularly directed at city planning boards. So I'll just mention that I don't refer to on this section about planning board basic organization, what is the, the exact the content of the membership, the, the composition of the membership of a city planning board. A city planning board always has nine members. Majority is, or already, the quorum is always a majority. Planning boards by statute have to meet once a month. The planning board should elect a chair and other officers from non-ex officio members, and they're always elected for one-year terms. In Lebanon, I'm assuming your planning board is appointed by the city council. I'm sure Tim or David Brooks will correct me on that. A planning board should have rules of procedure. It's required under RSA 676 colon 1. And as I said before, RSA 676 colon 4 really is the mandate for how you will handle application procedures. And by the way, you can have up to five alternates as approved in this case by your city council. So these are the basic elements of the planning board organization. When the planning board is going to decide what it's going to do about a particular application under 676 colon 4, you have to have a completed application. Then your regulation has to specify what is considered complete. Your checklist is typically the way you define for applicants what's considered a completed application, the types of plans, et cetera. You also want to specify as much as possible fees and costs to consultant studies that may be necessary. And an application for formal acceptance for consideration, the planning board only takes place at a public meeting of the board with a butter notification and published notice. I want to emphasize, because it's mentioned a little bit later, there are ways and means that are necessary for planning boards to grant waivers of regulations. I would never want a planning board to consider waiving a subdivision and site plan unless and until you had accepted an application as a completed application. That might take place after plan acceptance. And this is the way we used to do it on our planning board. We would hold a notice of a public hearing for plan acceptance. We would schedule it, we would hear the application presentation, vote to accept the application. And then we might vote, you know, there are certain elements of the regulations the applicant is, applicant is seeking to waive. Most typically, they wanted to waive some of the standard reviews that might, we might ask for. Are we going to require a traffic study? Are we going to require an economic impact study? Those are the kind of things we might vote for, but only after the plan has been accepted as a completed application. I've mentioned before, when I reiterate right here, it is very useful to both mandate by stat, by vote of the city council, that preliminary review of applications must take place. There is nothing more beneficial with the planning process. To get the applicant before you, without the applicant having spent or invested a lot of time and dollars in putting together complicated engineering and surveying drawings, maybe coming in with a simple set of drawings where you can, in a conceptual way, discuss an application and see if you can reach a meeting of the mind. And you can carry on that discussion without necessary of providing a butter notification. You can carry on the discussion and have non-binding kind of assessments of each other's position so that hopefully that allows an applicant to move forward with something that when the formal application is submitted, it's more likely to meet the board's concerns. Because I've seen it time and time again, if you tell an applicant, once they spend all the time and energy doing the plans, could we move this road over 100 feet? You can see the pained expression on the applicant's faces and the engineer's faces because they know the time and energy and expense that might be involved in making significant changes like that. You could catch that at conceptual consultation. So I encourage that process. Design review is a little bit modified form of the same kind of review process. It's still non-binding, but you then are required to give a butter notice, but you're not required to hold public hearings. And you might have a more detailed form of design review and approval, although under acceptance testing, you have to complete design review within 12 months. These are worthy and meritorious ways, I think, of, of efficiently addressing issues without unnecessary expense to applicants. And I think it makes it easier for the board to have a heart-to-heart discussion with something in terms of their desire to achieve certain development ends. Joan, did I see you have a hand raised? Go ahead.
Yes. But, but wouldn't you say that, that we could ask applicants if they would consider moving this or that? And I, I'd seen that in the past. And, and I've actually heard applicants sometimes respond with, oh yeah, that would be easy, we could do that. So we, we can ask, and we don't necess, even though we don't really know, I mean, I wouldn't know how much cost was involved in the different things. I mean, so, but there's no reason why we can't ask, correct?
There is no reason why you couldn't ask. I'm just pointing out that sometimes if you catch an applicant before a, a significant investment in engineering drawings and surveying with, with concepts which are, you know, thought to be beneficial to the community, and the applicant can live with it, and then they spend the dollars to do the planning in terms of the expense for doing the drawings, et cetera. I think it, it's a win-win because it's easier to have that conversation as conceptual consultation. But that's not to say you can't find that there is a critical thing you want to have fixed and ask for it to be modified once the plan is a completed application. That's okay. I'm just, I'm, I've, I've seen that conceptual consultation makes it easier to achieve the ends that both the applicant is willing to help pay for, because that's ultimately how it works, and, and the town or the city finds to be better for the public health, safety and welfare.
Okay.
Steve, it's Bruce. I'm getting a little bit ahead because you're coming to final. But in my experience, we've had design where it's gone on over a lot of meetings with relatively complete architectural designs for streets and driveways and all that sort of thing. Keeping in mind that when we get to final, we've got 65 days. So trying to use a design review process to clarify and eliminate, clarify as much as possible and eliminate as many questions so we don't get hung up when we get to the final on the 60-day, 65-day clock.
And that is a very good point that you're making. I guess I, my experience is, and I, again, every municipality is a different experience. 65-day clock is kind of critical. And you got to meet that 65-day clock. And it doesn't seem like a lot of time of 65 days after plan acceptance. But I've always found applicants who see that the board is really working hard to achieve a certain outcome, and we're waiting for that engineering review, or waiting for the applicant's engineer to submit a report, or a traffic study, whatever the case may be. My experience has always been applicants are prepared to extend the certain 65-day deadline. And, and by the way, I mean, my experience has also been, you know, an applicant who has an outstanding application review that their own engineer has to submit, or a report, or a design, or a modification, and the applicant says, well, I'm not going to give you an additional time under the timeline. The planning board just says, well, that's fine. Right now, all we can do is deny your plan. Would you rather give us another 30 days? Or we'll just say no right now. I've never seen an applicant say, oh, yeah, I want to take a denial right now. So, so it really, it really comes down to my, my feeling is, if you're working in good faith with that applicant, and they know that you really need that traffic study, or their engineer is a little late getting some, some drainage calcs to your engineer, they're going to give you the more time. But you're right, design review is another way to minimize feeling like you don't have enough time under the 65-day clock. And I think in part, that's why the design review process is in the statute. I think Gregorio, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question related to exactly what we're talking about. Because, you know, I understand that the three parts, the preliminary conceptual, preliminary review, conceptual consultation and design review. But each one contains, could be presented and rendered a different way. So that, you know, some are, are more clear and understandable or comprehensible, and others could come in, you know, different degrees of, of clarity. I think that presents a big problem because if you're, you know, if you're working against the clock, and you're having to go back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, because you're not getting the clarity, then that puts, I think it puts, you know, the, the planning board and, you know, the, the applicant in a, in a tight spot, you know, and that you can get into a situation where it's hard to move forward because you, you feel like you, you're not getting everything that you need. You don't have all the information to be able to, to have a really concise design review there before you move to the, to the last stage. So, you know, what do you do in those instances where, how can you minimize that? How can you put some safeguards in there in place so that that doesn't happen?
All right. Well, I have to confess, I have had not a lot of experience with actually participating in a design review process. One of the things that I would say, I thought worked very well to move a plan from acceptance to a, a, a sound final decision was to be making interim decisions. So the way we did it in my planning board, after conceptual consultation, and then we, we had plan acceptance and we went to the first public hearing, we would typically, usually within 60 days or 30 days of the initial plan acceptance, we would try to give some kind of preliminary approval. We would say to the applicant, okay, we're prepared to approve your road design, and we're prepared to approve your, your lot layout. But we, we think there's some issues here with the design of this retention basin. We're not prepared to approve that yet. So we're going to give you a preliminary approval. You know, Madam Chair, I would move that the planning board gave preliminary approval for this application, subject to final approval. And these are the elements of the preliminary approval, where we're prepared to say, are satisfied. And it becomes a checklist. We've, we've, we're okay with the, the road design, we're okay with the lot design, but we don't like this particular drainage structure that they have to build as a retention or detention basin. And we're going to tell them that has to go back for final review and approval after perhaps discussion between the applicant's engineer and the town's engineer. And then we'll take it up for a final approval in 30 days. But it's going to be on, the onus is on you to get that plan to us. I, you know, I suppose that could also work at design review, but I think it really comes down to, you know, from my experience, you know, you have, you're trying to give, because what the applicant needs, by the way, because they typically, what they've done is they've gone to a farmer brown and said, I'm going to buy an option on your land. And, and the option only lasts for a period of time. And they got to pump out all this money for the engineering and the option on the land. And that option is going to expire at some point. So, you know, the app, the applicant is highly motivated to get to the final approval. You know, so if one of the things you can give the applicant is, all right, well, we're going to give you an indication by a preliminary approval, you're on the right track. And, and these elements of your plan, we're going to approve. And we're not going to revisit that later on, so long as you get these other issues that aren't satisfactory to us, such as the design of this retention or detention basin. I mean, it's, it's a give and take. It's a process where you're trying to give a little bit to them and keep them understanding you're heading in the right direction. So that's my experience. And I have to confess, I haven't had a lot of experience to design review. But the way that we found it, we could give them, you know, bits of approval that we wouldn't revisit, but we would leave further issues that would have to be addressed at a, at a subsequent meeting. So I don't know if that, Gregorio, that answered your question. But that's how, in the planning board business that I did, that's how we addressed the issue.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, that, that's definitely a, a strategy, right? That, that involves, you know, the give and take, as you said. But it, but I think what I'm, what I'm describing is, is one where it's, it's difficult to, to, you know, to, to get to that give part, because you're not, you're not getting, excuse me, you're not getting clarity on a lot of the, the the, the components of the design.
Well, I, again, I, again, I don't know how you, you do this. I mean, every municipality is a little bit different. When I was on the planning board, many times, we would just get a report for our engineer. And the engineer would just, the, the report would be there, we review it beforehand. And it was the engineer's report that our engineer had reviewed their engineer's work, and this, this is the report. And the staff would, would tell us what are the salient parts of the engineers reply to us, based on the concerns the planning board had, and based upon the input from the applicant's engineer. You know, if you're not getting the information, you know, it's, nine times out of 10, what I have found is making sure the applicant's engineer and the town's consulting engineer, the public works department, making sure they're sharing information. And as long as they're talking with each other, that sometimes is a big part of making sure the process works correctly. Because when your engineer comes back and says, hey, I met with, you know, the applicant's engineer, and, and we've addressed this issue, and I, I feel satisfied, you're going to be in a better position to say, yes, okay, that's good, that works for us also.
Kathy, I see your hand.
Yes. Quite a number of the proposals that have come before us in the last year or so have been increasingly large and complicated. And they do take some time to, to get through. One of the procedures that has been used is something called continuing a meeting till the next couple of weeks or the next month. Can you explain the difference between continuing a meeting as opposed to, or continuing a hearing? Is that, does that affect the timeline different, differently from just closing the meeting and then having a different stage of the consideration?
Let me jump to the next slide. There's really no doubt that the planning board has a fixed timetable it has to meet. So whether or not at a public meeting, or a public hearing of the planning board on a particular application, the board votes to continue the application to a different date, time, at the same place, that's not going to change the fact that the statute allow, requires you to hold at least one public hearing and make a decision within 65 days of plan acceptance. I would say it's unusual that a plan, unless it's a simple lot line adjustment, is ever going to get approved in 65 days. So you're always going to be turning to the applicant and say, we need you to give us a written consent to extend the period of time for consideration. And I generally found that they're prepared to give you that additional time, whether or not you're continuing a public hearing on a particular night, so long as it, the onus is on them to get missing information. So it again, comes back to that exchange of information process. You know, we asked you for your engineer to review with our engineer this drainage calculation for that drainage structure. That meeting hasn't happened, the onus is on you. You know, if you want us to say no to this application right now, we can do that. But why don't you get, you know, light a fire under your engineer and make sure that they have this meeting so we can get the information we need so we can make it that sound decision, which is in part what Mr. Gregorio was mentioning. But whether or not you're continuing a public hearing from one night to a next, you still are under the obligation to make a decision within 65 days of plan acceptance. That's not, that doesn't change. And again, that takes me back to why, under preliminary consultation, you have no set time limit. And you want to use that or the design review process to give you more latitude in terms of the time necessary to make a sound decision. So I hope that answered your question, Kathy, but it doesn't, you know, I can't, there's no undoing the fact that there is a strict 65-day deadline you have to make a final decision, unless the applicant grants a consented to period of time to enlarge the time for consideration. So let me continue on. We're heading towards the 8:30 time period. I just want to mention a couple of other things for your consideration. There's an alternative site plan review and approval process that you should and perhaps should consider. So the city council can also ask the planning board to delegate some of its site plan review powers for minor site plans to review powers for minor site plans to a committee of technically qualified administrator, something to consider. I understand your chairman has suggested that you're reviewing some of your regulations, that might be something the city council could authorize. You could also establish a technical review group. You may already do this. I know in Rochester was recently a Supreme Court case on it, Martin versus the City of Manchester. I have a question from M.H., go ahead. Matt Hall.
Hi there, thank you. You know, as we are winding down, I guess what I'm curious about is with your experience, what, where do you think, where do planning boards or individual members get fouled up the most, or where do you see the, you know, what's the biggest problem area in your mind or thing that people really have to work on to make sure that they're doing their job correctly?
Well, number one, I think to be an effective member of a planning board, you got to read the packet. So come prepared to your meeting, having read the packet in its entirety, that the staff has pushed out or is available on the website. That's key, because you cannot make a sound decision if, while in a Zoom meeting or in a live meeting, you're sitting, trying to read a detailed engineering report to make a sound decision. So, and it's a lot of stuff, I understand, so as much as possible, you know, set up the system so that the applicants are obligated to provide the data that's going to be supplied to the planning board at the upcoming meeting, enough time ahead of the meeting so the stuff can be pushed out to the planning board for review. That would be number one. Number two, I guess the other thing I would say is, you know, if you have, you know, a high degree of confidence, and I don't know who you're using, and whether it's a staff engineer or outside consulting engineer, but, you know, the thing that I found, if we had this one engineer for an engineering firm in Manchester, she was really good, she wrote really clear reports, and she was very responsive, and if she got a report from the applicant's engineer, she'd get a response back very quickly. That was essential to allowing us to make a sound decision because we know, you know, we had confidence in the work she was doing, and when she would respond, you know, we would really rely upon it, and we didn't have to second guess it. And the other thing, as I said before to Gregorio, you know, it's, it's a, it's a relationship you develop with a developer, and it's a back and forth, and it's a give and take. And if the give and take is seen by, as fair by all concerned, I think the system works, can work well. So the way that, as I was mentioning to Gregorio, we would always try, as much as possible, where we could give a preliminary approval to the applicant, we would try to do that, and we would try to say, okay, we've dealt with the road design issue, let's not come back and deal with that again. I think where boards might get in trouble is, you know, revisiting stuff that you've already addressed at two meetings ago, and you feel like you're reinventing the wheel, rather than, you know, wait a minute, we gave them a preliminary approval, this was approved, now we're just dealing with these final issues. And that way, it's almost like a checklist, and you can move forward without feeling like it's two steps forward, three steps back. So those are the three things I would mention that would be very helpful to efficiently, you know, deal with subdivisions and site plans. Hopefully that answers your question, Matt.
It did, thank you.
If we have time?
Yep, Laurel.
Yep. Do you have any updated information on the housing review panel? I think, not sure I'm referring to it correctly, but it was this-
The Housing Appeals Board. Well, I can tell you this, the chairman of the Housing Appeals Board who was appointed by Governor Sununu is Greg Michael. I have worked with Greg Michael for many years. He was a lawyer for many years in Merrimack. He represented the Merrimack Village District, he represented many developers, I had a number of cases, and I represented municipalities where he sued my municipality for allegedly improper planning and zoning decisions. Some of the cases I won, some of them his, he won. I think he's a very professional person. I would also say this, he probably has more of a developer point of view, but I would say, I think he's an excellent choice. So how the Housing Appeals Board proceeds, I think will be very much dependent upon how Greg Michael puts the appeals board together. Remember, it's only designed to allow an alternate way of approving, of appealing a planning board decision when housing is an issue in a subdivision or site plan. It doesn't address all applications, whether it's commercial or industrial, it's only dealing with housing developments. And I would assume Attorney Michael is now working on putting the appeals board together so that they could begin accepting appeals, but I haven't seen anything further from the judicial branch, who is where the appeals board is housed, so to speak.
So just a quick follow-up question. Does NMA have any guidance or any recent reports on the housing appeals process?
Well, we just have the statute, and I can't quote it verbatim, but it lays out a process for how an appeal is prosecuted. Actually, I'm looking at my pink version of the zoning and planning handbook, and I'm fairly certain it is expressed in RSA 677, hold it there. It is in RSA Chapter 679, which became effective July 1st, 2020. So there's a number of different provisions of RSA Chapter 679, which are all found on pages 514 through 517 of the pink zoning and planning handbook. I'm not going to pretend that I've studied it in great detail. I think, just understand that it really was designed to create a separate mechanism for appeal to this board, and it's, the analogy to, in this particular setting is the, the housing, the board that is used for the Board of Tax and Land Appeals is the analogy that was used to determine how the Housing Appeals Board was set up. So it's meant to be kind of similar to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, where if you're aggrieved by an assessment, you can either appeal to the Superior Court or the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. That's really the extent that I know right now.
Thank you.
So, continuing. Developments of regional impact, so planning boards have this duty to ensure if there is a development of regional impact because of project's proximity to a neighboring community or transportation networks, or anticipated emissions of light, noise, smoke, odors or particles, proximity to shared aquifers or shared facilities, that the project might be one of regional impact. I think that's the kind of decisions that should be made at plan acceptance, and if you vote that there is no development of regional impact, you proceed with the application. If you vote yes, you probably have to stop the application process and start it all over again after you've sent notice to the abutting communities and the Regional Planning Commission having jurisdiction, so that you can allow them to participate in all aspects of the project. And then continuing, planning board applicants only have one bite at the apple, so as a matter of necessity to protect the interests of the abutters, to the settled expectations on how the land use and planning regulations will be handled in your community, if you've been denied approval for a subdivision of 10 lots, you can't come back to the planning board with the exact same application a second time around, hoping the exact same application will be approved by a different set of board members or under different circumstances. You have to have a substantial change in the application or the circumstances or the neighborhood to justify getting an application back before the board, and try to seek approval if there hasn't been a substantial change in circumstances. I mentioned, I want to just quickly mention third-party consultants, the planning board has the power to require an applicant to pay for third-party consultants. There is a provision in the statute, I haven't seen it used, where if an applicant thinks a particular consultant is adverse to their interest, they can ask the planning board to choose a different third-party consultant. I don't know if that's happened in Lebanon, but I suspect that could happen, and it doesn't say you have to agree not to use that particular engineer, but you might have to reasonably consider an alternative. But you can require third-party consultants, obviously, I'm sure you already do so. You just can't duplicate consultive review under this statute that is duplicated by what was asked for and presented by the same applicant before the zoning board of adjustment. As I mentioned, you can waive subdivision of site plan regulations, but you cannot grant a waiver unless it meets the requirements of the statute. So the planning board can waive strict conformity, which would pose an unnecessary hardship, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, sounds like a variance, or specific conditions relative to that particular project indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. There is one case on this issue, this was a circumstance where an applicant basically said to the planning board, this is a common regulation, you can't have more than a certain number of lots on a dead-end road, and the planning board had a limitation, you can't have more than 10 lots on a road with one means of ingress and egress, you'd have to have a second means of ingress and egress. So the planning board, in this particular instance, had the applicant say, well, it's kind of a pain, I really don't want to have a limitation of 10 lots, the planning board just granted the waiver. But there was no basis in the record for the planning board to conclude, and the court concluded that that was true, that this really was a hardship, that this represented a difficulty for the applicant to build the project. So they really have to meet one of these criteria, these two criteria, in order to grant a waiver. Bruce, I think I saw you perhaps trying to make a question there?
No, no.
Okay.
Other than Steve, we're starting to run out of time, so, and you still got 11.
A few more. Oh. Yeah, so I will try to get through the rest of this without further ado. So you can waive the regulations, as I mentioned. Hardship cannot be self-created, so if someone has an application process that has a particular piece of land which has inherent difficulties, and they buy into that, that doesn't necessarily create hardship to waive a regulation. Planning board regulations might have an administrative gloss, so when the planning board has consistently interpreted its regulations to mean a certain thing, if it suddenly wants to change its mind and have it mean something else, you might face the fact that the court reviewing your decision might say, wait a minute, you've gone so far down the road to have that regulation mean this, you can't change what it now means. And I think would, for a planning board, the better approach to avoid the administrative gloss standard is to, in fact, think about if you need an amendment to your regulation, amend your regulations. Public hearing process, you have to hear from an applicant, abutters, and others with direct interest. You have to impartially follow your rules and procedure, as I mentioned before, site visits or public meetings, and I don't know those of you who have read Riggins Rules, but there are really helpful ways in which a board should consider how a board member and a chair would run a public meeting. When you're considering the information that you're weighing to make a decision, you really should make sure you have all what you need before you close the public hearing. The board can clearly decide that it's going to close the public hearing and vote at a later meeting, but avoid ex parte contacts, that no direct contact with parties after you've closed the public hearing process. You can rely upon your personal knowledge, but you cannot ignore uncontradicted expert testimony in making a board decision. And that brings us to the Dartmouth versus Hanover case. So those of you are familiar with this case, obviously, it's in a town next door. The real key to understand about this case is, all of the Hanover land use regulations were deemed satisfied by the code enforcement officer and the land use staff in the town of Hanover. But the planning board ultimately decided, even in ignoring expert evidence to the contrary, that this athletic building was going to have a direct and deleterious impact on the neighbors. It was going to cast a shadow, the shadow was going to rob the neighbors of light during the winter, et cetera. And ultimately, the Supreme Court said there wasn't enough to support the board's decision. And I think the key thing to keep in mind, and you can't rely upon lay opinions and anecdotes to refute uncontradicted expert testimony, and you really can't use your own opinions to say, well, yes, the building inspector says all the regulations have been met, but we're still going to say no. You really have to hang your hat on something specific. And I think the case that gives us the best guidance of this is the Somahuma versus the Town of Tilton case. In that case, the Supreme Court made clear that the planning board did have the power to say, a particular 90-foot flagpole that was proposed by the Somahuma Corporation of the Town of Tilton was not going to be consistent with the overall design expectations of the site plan regulations of the Town of Tilton. So what the court said, the board had the power to say, yes, we didn't have a specific regulation that prohibited flagpoles of 90 feet tall, but you had enough in its regulations to say that the site plan review would not be in the public interest to permit a 90-foot tall flagpole. The planning board eventually approved a flagpole that was smaller in height. So the boards, what the court said, the board's authority to make decisions was not just if they met the regulations A through Z according to its terms, the board was required to grant approval. And this is, also ties us back to the Dartmouth case. Even though that is true, even in the Dartmouth case, the court said, we're not saying to planning boards, if all the regulations are met, you must grant approval. But if all the regulations are met, and you're going to say no, you have to have something more than just a lay opinion. And there was enough in the Somahuma case where the court said, yeah, you know, the board had enough information to conclude, independent from their personal opinions, that 90-foot tall flagpole with a flag on it was not going to be an appropriate attribute of this particular commercial use. So that really, what I think is the key thing to keep in mind with regards to the degree of discretion a planning board can exercise. If you're going to say no, and the applicant has met all of the requirements of your regulations, you have to have something more than your personal opinion. It has to be derived from some real and clear and concrete evidence, a particular element of a use is going to be inconsistent with your desires for that particular use and development in that particular part of your community. Have to have written notice of decision, have to approve, disapprove, or grant with conditions an application, and has to be on file on the planning board's records within five days of the approval. A tie vote is not a decision. If you grant a conditional approval, don't rely upon representations the applicant has made during the public hearing process. If someone says, I'm going to build a totlot to put in a little area for the kids to work, have a playground, make sure you get that as a condition of approval. You can't rely upon a representation in the minutes as a binding approval. Conditions has to be related to specific compliance criteria in your rules and regulations. You could have standard conditions, many planning boards have this, I had them for many of my municipalities that had a planning board approval process, they had a standard set of conditions, and then in addition to the standard conditions, they would apply conditions precedent. That's a condition that you have to satisfy before the chairman will sign the plan and get recorded, and then there's conditions subsequent. We're going to impose on this particular use day of use limitations, or you can't pick up garbage after 1 o'clock in the morning, or the lights have to be turned off at a certain time, or this landscaping has to be maintained in the future. In certain instances, if a certain type of condition, usually this occurs when the planning board says, this approval is granted subject to final engineering review, that final engineering review is a discretionary judgment, it has to be made only at a subsequent compliance hearing held by the planning board in the future, so you could have a need to have compliance hearings. Grandfather rights, I've mentioned them before, two things I want to say about grandfather rights. Under RSA 67439, a planning board really should say how much work has to be done in this project within the first 24 months, because if you don't define that, they'll be able to do any amount of work and be protected from subsequent changes in zoning and planning for five years. So you really should define how much work we expect to have active and substantially completed within the first 24 months. And you should, as part of the approval, say, if you complete X amount of work within five years, it'll be substantially complete, and the project will be permanently vested from changes in subdivision site plan and zoning regulations. I've already mentioned the Housing Appeals Board, it's in effect, I think it really is depending upon Attorney Michael and others in the judicial branch to put the details and then in terms of the procedures they're going to follow in handling housing appeals. But those, I would assume, will start off relatively soon, and will get going sometime this fall. Ultimately, if a decision of the planning board is made about which an applicant has aggrieved, they can appeal to Superior Court, and it's really the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that the board's decision was illegal or unreasonable. that board's decision was illegal or unreasonable. Anytime the planning board makes a decision, you have no burden of proof. The burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate the decision of the board was illegal or unreasonable. So that brings me to the end of the presentation. Only 10 minutes over. I'm certainly happy to wait a little bit further to take additional questions from those who have stayed with us this long and dark and stormy night.
Steve, the best part of this is it's all recorded. So people will have the opportunity to go back and refresh their memories. This is very helpful, but it's also very detailed law, and it just can be overwhelming. Any questions before we move on?
Thank you.
David, do you have anything to add?
No, just thank you to Steve for his presentation and his time. And again, you, the board members should feel free to ask staff to work with local attorney or NHMA, as we are members. If you have questions about interpretations of things, get in touch with us.
Again, thanks, Steve. That's very, very helpful.
All right, very good. I'm going to stop showing my screen and leave the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on, Gregorio, you came in a little bit late, and I was having problems. So I didn't get a chance to catch up with you for roll call. Are you alone?
Yes, I'm alone.
All right, and we have a couple of issues on which we will vote tonight. So I'm appointing you to fill one of our vacancies. So now I'm going to swing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have no vacancies now. We have nine regular members, and all of them are present.
But they haven't, they're not full members, are they, David?
I believe they have taken, I understand that both Jeremy and Kim have been sworn in.
Yeah, that's my understanding too. This is Tim. My understanding is we have, like David said, we have nine regular members and one alternate. Everyone is sworn in and ready to go.
I am, I thought we had six regular, it's a number we have, sorry. Seven regular members and three alternates.
Ms. Chuning and Mr. Rutter were both appointed as regular members by the council.
I wasn't aware of that. All right. I'm not sure I understand how that happened. All right, that having been said, I'm going to turn to Kim. And Kim, would you take a couple of minutes and just introduce yourself to the board members?
Sure. Kim Chuning. I have lived in West Lebanon for the better part of seven or eight years. I've spent the last 20-ish, so years of my career working in property management. So when it came time to, you know, volunteer time back to the city of Lebanon, the planning board seemed like a natural, a natural way for me to go.
Okay, thank you for that. And Jeremy, who's also known as Jerry?
Yeah, so I am known as Jerry, so that's easier than Jeremy. I'm retired from teaching at Dharma for 35 years. Where I taught in the classics department. I have no background in real estate or, you know, building or anything like that. But I am an archaeologist, and so I am interested in city planning and things like that. And, but most of the cities that I study are thousands of years old. So that's not very helpful in the context of today's Lebanon. But I've lived in Lebanon for 40 years, and it's way past time for me to give back a little bit to the community.
Thank you both for joining. We're thrilled to have new members. Right, let's move on to our second study item. David or Tim, do you want to introduce this?
Sure, this is Tim. This is an idea that we brought to the planning board's attention, I believe, at the July work session, very briefly. And actually, Attorney Buckley mentioned this several times during his presentation tonight. And that is the idea that, or staff's proposal, to create a, you know, what we're currently calling a technical review committee, but in the statute, I think it is called a special site review committee. There's different names you can attribute it to it. But I guess we're just referring to it for now as a technical review committee. And this would be a formal body created by the planning board and staffed by staff members. There's a way that, that there'd be a way that the planning board decides which staff member sit on the technical review committee. But the idea would be to create a minor site plan category under which the technical review committee would have jurisdiction, not just to review, but also to approve. And so our preliminary thought is that those applications would would be of a small scale that should still adhere to the site plan review regulations, but may not require the more extensive process that's involved with an application for the full planning board. And so this is a, this is a process that is utilized by many, many communities, including, including our neighbor Hanover, who has told us that it works quite well for them. And one of the key benefits for the planning board would be to free up some of your time so that you can focus on larger projects, larger development projects, or other matters that come before the board, whether it's zoning amendments or working on site plan and subdivision amendments, training opportunities. I mean, there's so much that the planning board could be doing. And so that would be one, one primary benefit to the planning board. There is a benefit to the applicant in not having to go through the, again, the more, I don't want to say formality, because there is, there are formalities associated with the, and required for, again, what I'm calling the technical review committee. But it is sort of less, it's just a lesser process overall, and could take less time for these, these small-scale applications to get reviewed pursuant to the site plan review regulations, but in a, in a more, more efficient, kind of low-key, low-key manner. And what will facilitate that, what will help to facilitate that is creating different categories of site plans. We would want to delineate specifically what does not require any site plan review, and then create that minor site plan category, which we think would encompass even more, even more projects than what currently is, currently requires or triggers, if you will, site plan review. And then finally, a major site plan review category pursuant to which the, the planning board would have jurisdiction. It's quite common to have exemptions from, from review by the technical review committee. And so one that I, that I mentioned in the memo is that, you know, if there's a, if there's a project that is of a scale to qualify as a minor site plan for review by the technical review committee instead of the planning board, but the application is requesting a waiver from one of the design requirements. You know, that's an example of what could automatically get, pull it out of jurisdiction under the TRC and into full review by the planning board. So how, how this is crafted, how this is done is, is up, is going to be up to the planning board. There's, there are a lot of things to consider. There's a lot of work. There's, there's a decent amount of work that has to go into it. And I think it's, we think it's worthwhile. But we didn't want to embark on this endeavor unless we could get some idea that there's a general, that there's a general, that there's general interest in this among the, among the full planning board. So we had, we had initially raised this at the, at the Development, Development Review Regulation Subcommittee. And there was, I think there was, it's fair to say there was consensus to create a minor site plan category and to differentiate those from major, what we would call major site plans. But there was a little bit more uncertainty as to whether the, whether creating a technical review committee and delegating some of that jurisdiction to that committee for minor site plans, whether that was something that, that the committee was, was fully interested in pursuing. And so we wanted to bring this idea to the full planning board at this time and get some preliminary feedback. So for example, if there's just, just, you know, if there's, if the consensus is no, we want to see, we want to see all, all site plans. We want to continue to make sure that we see them and review them and approve them, or have the ability to prove them, then we won't spend our time creating, you know, working to see if we can create a technical review committee. But if there's some interest in that, then again, I think, I think it's worth staff time to develop those proposed regulations to be, to continue to be reviewed with the, with the subcommittee, and then hopefully have a consensus proposal that we would bring to you at some later time to adopt. So I hope that makes a minimum amount of sense. But I can, happy to answer any questions about what it is that we're asking from the planning board tonight.
Hey, Tim. Yeah. This is Tom Mart. Hey, Tim, just real quickly, I read it over. I thought the explanation that you gave us in the Planning Development Committee was good. But this document helped me view it further. The only question I really have is, do you see this as being a subcommittee of the board? And so it would be, the membership of this committee would be board members that would serve on this? Or are you looking at a subcommittee that may have members of our board on, but may also have non-board members on it?
I'm not, I think it's, the statute suggests that it is exclusively staff members. I don't, I don't know that any planning board members can sit on it. I don't think, I don't think they can. The statute says, the, again, what I'm, what I'm calling a technical review committee, can be delegated site review powers and duties in regard to minor site plans. Again, to a, to a committee of technically qualified administrators chosen by the planning board. So it is, they're chosen by you. But they have, but the members have to, have to be from the departments of public works, engineering, community development, planning, or other similar departments in the municipality. So this is, this is a staff review of minor site plans. And just to be clear, we do have a technical review committee now that is, that is, that is a, that it is a technical body of those staff members, police department, fire department, plan department, city engineer, city assessor. And we get together and review plans that have been submitted by applicants. We review those plans with the applicants to provide them feedback and try and work with them to get, get a plan that meets our, you know, meets the applicant's goals, the city's goals, and of course, the applicable site plan or subdivision regulations before that comes, before that comes to you for full review. So the applicant submits the plan, you know, staff reviews it. We meet with the applicant. We give them our suggestions. Then the applicant submits a revised set of plans. And usually, that revised set of plans, that's been revised based on the input of staff, that's what goes to the planning board for, for your review and approval. And so that's kind of, so, so, so what we're, what we're conceptually thinking of is that group that already meets would be transformed more formally into a technical review committee or a special site review committee under RSA 674433 into a body that's been authorized by the planning board, not just to give, give staff comments to any application that comes before the planning board, but to in fact, review and approve small-scale minor site plans. And how we, how the board defines minor site plans is going to be up to the board. Obviously, staff is, staff will have some initial recommendations, and then we'll work through the subcommittee to refine those. And then, and then we would present that to the full board. And I'm sure there will be, there will be additional changes. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how we define what it is that the technical review, technical review committee has jurisdiction over. But, but again, it would be, it's staff reviewing these applications for conformance with the site plan regulations.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
This is Matt. Tim, as a follow-up to that, because I think that makes all sense. And my opinion is, I think, I think this makes a lot of sense to at least move forward and examine it more carefully in the subcommittee. But I like the sound of it. My question to you, Tim, is, would this, or at least maybe the way it's been done in other municipalities, let's say this, this body was formed of staff that would deal with these minor issues that the full planning board decided would be dealt with in this group, in this body. Would these be public meetings?
Yes, they would.
Okay, so someone like, so like a planning board member like I, for, you know, I could, for example, like sit in on one to like, see how it goes, to see if I, basically, we could sit on and see, like, do we think it's working or not, for example?
Well.
Not, not, not to comment, but like, to be like, you know, present effective.
Well, not, not necessarily, because, I mean, you could certainly participate and observe the staff review meetings that we currently hold with applicants. Those, I don't believe those are public meetings, which is, which I think is the Rochester case that Attorney Buckley referred to during his presentation. You might not have noticed that, but I think that's what he's referring to. When, when staff meets with an applicant, that's not necessarily a public meeting. But, but the way we do it here is, we've always, you know, when we were meeting, when we were meeting in person, the door was always open. If anybody came in, they would certainly be, they'd certainly be welcome to stay. And so likewise, if there are any planning board members that would like to participate in those staff review meetings to see how it works, and I know that some of you have, you're more than welcome to. And just, just let, just let us know, and we can send an invite. But, but you can't, but we can't, unfortunately, we can't have a test run, though, of how the TRC would work as a, as a, as a regulatory body.
Sure, yeah. And to me, I actually don't think that that's that big of a deal. I was just merely curious what you thought about it. But I don't think that that's actually a big deal. Because again, I mean, if the board decides to do this, we would decide, we would decide what, what its scope is, what its powers are, what its jurisdiction is. So I mean, it's, I think we go in knowing exactly what we've done.
Jim Winnie?
I think Ms. Romano was first.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, a couple of things. This sounded like a good idea in committee, but now I have some concerns with regard to the public meeting aspect. Does that mean the abutters will not be able to be notified or be part of that consideration?
No, thank you for asking that. I meant, I meant to clarify. So, so even though technically how the, how our group meets now is not a public meeting, if we were, if the planning board authorized a technical review committee or a special site review committee to review minor site plans, we would have to give notice to abutters. We have to, we have to follow those, those, those notice formalities.
So there was some discussion earlier in the year about some plans which basically go through a duplicate meeting with the planning board after they've gone through the zoning board of adjustment and had the same kind of hearing. And that would kind of be the type of minor plan that you wouldn't have to formally present to the planning board. But who would decide if an application was only going to be viewed by this technical review committee or come before the board? Would that just be staff and the planning board wouldn't know?
Well, 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 first of all, we would, the board would be creating very specific categories within which you would generally feel comfortable that these types of applications would be reviewed by, would be reviewed by the technical, technical review committee. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, there can be exceptions to that. And there are, Concord is just coming, is coming to mind right now, where they have a number of exceptions that would, would automatically bump those minor site plan applications into major site plans. that would would automatically bump those minor site plan applications into major site plan applications. And there may be, I mean, how this is done, there's a lot of flexibility. So if there's a specific concern that you would have that might be able to be dry, you know, we could address that probably at the outset by through through formulating the regulations in a certain way.
I wonder if it would be helpful if the staff looked over all the applications that had come before the planning board in the past year and picked out, I don't know, the half a dozen or so that they thought could have just gone through technical review instead to kind of give the board an idea whether that was something we would be comfortable with?
Sure. I mean, it's it's sort of depend. Oh, sorry, David, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think that's a very good idea. We could, we could bring you examples of projects that were on the low side of low end of the spectrum in terms of relative intensity that did go through the site plan review, and we could try to bring you examples of projects that did fall below our threshold and didn't trigger site plan review, but for which we might be able to, again, bring into this technical review committee process so that we actually are lowering the threshold in some in some cases, even though we're streamlining and making the trying to make the the process more efficient.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Jim Winnie?
Thanks. I I think it's an idea worth pursuing. I have a couple of possible concerns, and I don't know that I need answers on them now, but one would is related to sort of transparency. If if this is not sort of fully accessible to the public, are we taking something that you know, the planning board has to do in public and and passing it off to a different body that is not doing the same thing in public? Which is maybe I misunderstanding, but that's what it sounds like to me. We're talking about.
Public.
Say again?
Butters are noticed.
Yeah, it's a it's a public, it's a public meeting.
Right. It sounded like the answer to Matt's question of of coming to attend. Maybe I just wasn't clear on it. I might I might be brain fried.
That's, yeah. I was just referring to the fact that likely the members, the makeup of this technical review committee would be similar to the group of staff people who currently meet to review plans. Yep. And and those meetings between staff and applicant right now applicants right now are not are not public meetings, although but but if but if but if that was if that if that group of people was to be designated a TRC and and given the authority to review plans, then absolutely those meetings would be public meetings, and they would we need to be noticed and need to be open to the public.
And then my other thought is, you know, I like the idea of getting some examples and and also possibly doing some kind of a sunset or review point. Where we say, okay, we'll try this for six months or three months or a year, or whatever it is, and then sort of review where we're at again.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Any other comments?
This is Tom again. I do have one question. I was trying to seek some clarity, actually. So, Tim, when this TRC reviews, they have the ability then to also approve. Is that correct? Because otherwise, they're already reviewing. I mean,
Right. Exactly.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be brought to us at all. It would be something we would just automatically accept that they had approved it, and so it goes forward.
Right, within whatever box you we the board builds. And again, there's a lot of flexibility as to how big that box is.
Let me ask another question. Yeah, and and this is kind of tied to what Kathy, I think her question was, and the suggestion that we not only look at over the last year, those things that were fallen below the need for us to review that could have fallen into the TRC. I guess the two things that I would want is also an example of one that was right on the verge. What caused it to be below having to come to us, or what could have triggered it to come before us? And then the second part is, can you also get a couple of examples of other board or other communities and the actual regulations that they've designed for this particular type of operation, so that we can look at those and see, okay, what were the parameters in setting up the regulations that allowed the proper controls for us as a board to be able to sure ensure that we have over, you know, what we're delegating to, quite honestly, the staff to be able to do. I do like a couple of the others. I do have a little concern of removal of this from a from a board position into a staff position. And, you know, I I don't know. Yeah, I feel just a little bit uncomfortable with it. When I thought that there would be, it would be a subcommittee of the board with maybe other players involved, that gave me a little bit of better comfort, but having it completely removed from the board, not sure I'm as comfortable as I thought I was.
Yeah, it we we can try and and get you information on what other communities do in a way that that is makes sense and is digestible. It is, it's not easy to do, because every community, their their categories are very different, their process is very different, how they're organized, and their regulations is very different. That's 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 easier said than done, but we can certainly do our best to get you some examples.
If I could throw in some my thoughts. I'm certainly very enthusiastic with our development regulation subcommittee. And this is but one task. I think this is really worthwhile. An example is we've got a an application coming to us very shortly from someone who owns the building that has three rental apartments and wants to convert that to condominiums. That is a subdivision regulation which to me is completely out of line with what we are trying to do. My only small bone to pick with Tim's document is I would have put the public first, not the planning. I think everything that we need to be doing is thinking about applicants, abutters, and the public in general first, and ourselves second. And I would certainly encourage the development regulations subcommittee to have a broader discussion. Where are we going? How are we going to deal with the problem that we've already encountered this year with Dartmouth and Saxon side by side in one subdivision and the other site? It doesn't make sense. So we've got very broad things. And lastly, Jim Winnie, you have a particularly interesting role in this. Because my belief is that the planning board has the responsibility to draft regulations, but policy behind those regulations lies with city council, and you're our liaison between city council and and the planning board. So David and Tim, I think the answer is yes.
Joan has a question.
Question?
Sorry, Joan.
That's okay. I was thinking that I was thinking that perhaps the way the planning, the full planning board would be notified, just a thought, would be when we have our like we're supposed to have tonight, when we have our committee reports, that that group could say, we had a, you know, line adjustment, we had this, we had this, we had this. Something like that, just a thought.
Well, I think I think all of those thoughts will be directed to the Development Regulation Subcommittee. Laurel, do I hear your voice?
Yes, I have a question.
Yep.
Probably not a very legitimate question, but something that the chair just mentioned raised concerns for me where I had no concerns before. And that is the conversion of apartments to condominiums as something that doesn't merit the planning board's attention. What happens to the tenants in those apartments?
I don't know. I don't know that that's within our purview. I'm just bringing that up.
That it probably wasn't in our purview, but it's a concern of mine.
I I understand, Laurel. I just what what are we charged with doing? And finding that balance between the public's desires and the regulations that we have to apply. So I don't even know why condominium conversion falls under subdivision rules. I can tell you, there was one that was done. You may be familiar with, I think it's called Treetops. Now, the apartment building that's behind Webb on 120 going up the hill. That came to us as a rental. Two years later, it came back as a conversion. And the only thing we accomplished in that process was getting the applicant to deliver a copy of the probation document for review by the 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 city's lawyer.
Well, the main difference probably is it allows each unit to be sold individually rather than as an entirety. I guess my
Right, right. But what is the role? All I'm asking, I'm questioning, and we don't have time for tonight, is what is the role of the planning board in all of that?
Because occasionally we review plans for rental housing unit developments that are based on a principle that the developer will be creating affordable workforce housing. And sometimes those developments turn into expensive condominiums. And therefore, the premise upon which the original plan was brought to the planning board has been in some way abrogated. And I I don't like the idea of that possibly happening under the rubric of this committee. I'm not saying that it would. I'm just saying that the example that you raised where I had no concerns before about the establishment of a committee suddenly made my antenna go up.
Well, good. I mean, that's why I'm trying to get some debate going, not debate tonight, but thought as we we go through this process and all of our regulations. What are we trying to achieve with our regulations? I think enough on this subject. David and Tim, you've got enough guidance?
Chair, Joan here. I'm just wondering if we can ask staff to give us some answers to the things we've just been asking. And if they can find out for us. I think it's important points that we've been raising about. You know, some some projects we've been said, well, these will be affordable apartments, but I know that there's that technical definition of affordable. And then there's the general use meaning, well, they'll be lower than super expen, you know, it'll be lower price rather than super expensive. So I I'd like our staff to do a little research for us and help us out.
Yeah, I I agree, and I think that's all part of this development regulation.
For future meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks.
David and Tim, have you got enough guidance on this subject?
I think we do.
Yep, thank you.
With that, let's move on to committee report. I'm not going to go through the list. I'll just ask, does anyone representing one of these committees have something to report?
I could do it really quickly for two.
Yeah, please.
The Classics Roads Committee has met twice now, and what we are doing is we are dealing with the handful of roads that we were not able to bring to a successful successful suggestion to the committee, because our committee is purely advisory. We do all the legwork about finding out the roads, and we ended up when we did our formal study over a year ago with a few roads that we just we couldn't make a decision on. So we are rehearing those now and with the hope of giving the council a suggestion when we're done with it. And then the, let's see, the Energy Committee. The only setback that we've had was that and it's very complicated, all the players and and their parts. Is that the Energy Committee was hoping to get a a fast recharging electric car charging station sort of right smack in the middle of Lebanon, and through technicalities, that's been temporarily taken off the table. But we're hoping that we will be able to get get one in the future. Like I said, it's some technicalities. So we're hoping that when some more I's are dotted and T's are crossed, that that will come back, and we might be able to get it. And there was a very, very nice letter in the the Valley News speaking in favor of it and why it would be a really good thing. That's a problem for electric vehicle owners. They have they have a certain limit of miles they can go before they need a charge. And of course, they always want the rapid charge versus the the charges come in three lengths, and they have to just sit there until their car is finished. And I think the rapid one is like two hours. So anyway, those two boards that I'm on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, this is Tom, and I guess I'll quickly report on CIP. We finished it, and I want to thank David for guiding us through two nights of fun adventure and learning a lot about what is important in the city. And so I think that's going to be coming before us, and I'm going to ask David to tell us what date that looks like it'll be coming before us. And that's the committee I'm going to report on.
This is David. To answer that question, my hope is to get it on your agenda for September 14th for the full board to have that discussion and allow the committee members to report out and and help answer questions.
Anyone else? David, are we going to have a shot at SCIM sometime this year?
I I I think so. Let me talk with Rebecca to to find out where we stand on this on SCIM. I do have a couple of comments to make with respect to the new two new members on the board. There are a couple of vacancies in our subcommittees. One is for the Heritage Commission, and one is for the Upper Valley Transportation Management Association. And one is for the Steering Committee for the Implementation of the Master Plan. So those committees already have vacancies. Feel free to give me a call if if you have questions about any of them. And I also would like to report that this past Wednesday night, the city council created another committee that will have a spot for a planning board member. That committee is going to be titled the West Lebanon Revitalization Advisory Committee. The the materials for the creation of that committee are included in the August 19th City Council Packet describing what that committee is going to be responsible for. It is a short duration. It does have a sunset date through December 31st of 2021. But the short the the brief synopsis of that of that committee's charge will be to serve in an advisory capacity to the city manager and the planning department regarding plans for the revitalization and redevelopment of the Central Business District area of West Lebanon. Emphasis on plans for Westboro Yard, Three Seminary Hill, Streetscape improvements, the Bridge Street Park, and the potential for development of parallel connecting roadways along Main Street, which were included within the West Lebanon vision. So as I said, there will be one city councillor, one planning board member, one member of the Economic Development Commission, three Ward One residents of the city, and three Ward One business owners. So we don't we don't have to identify anyone tonight, but be thinking about that role. I think that the positions on that committee will be filled over the next couple of months. I don't expect it to meet before probably October at the earliest, while we get those positions filled. But be thinking about it if you have an interest in serving on that.
Okay, great. We have four sets of minutes to approve. I'm hoping that we can do them as one block, but do we have comments on them? Other than typos?
I have some other than typos.
All right, Joan.
Before them? Okay, on the 713 minutes on page nine, line 32, it lists Mr. Winnie as being a voting met person, but I believe he was absent that meeting, and I so I believe it was.
as being a voting net person, but I believe he was absent that meeting and I, so I believe it was Ms. Leo Hill that was voting. Okay? Okay, and then, do you want me to do the next one? 27?
Okay.
On 27, page three, line 42. It's a comment that I made that I said Ms. Monroe noted that the observation expressed by the joint commission that people would be moving to the Upper Valley due to the COVID was insightful. It's in the, in the, it's typed as away from, but no, they were saying to, meaning there's, there's movement away from the cities and where there's such a deep, deep concentration of people that, you know. And then I didn't, nothing for me on the 29th. And then on the 10th, August 10th, page five, line 45. In the list of the goals that the Lebanon Housing Authority Project is hoping to meet, it lists heater landing and I think that's just, that one is a typo. That should just come right out. It's not a goal. Somehow I just slipped in there. Okay, that's what I have. That's all I have.
Any changes? Could I have a motion to approve as amended all four minutes?
This is Tom and I would like to move that we approve all four minutes as amended.
Joan seconds.
And Joan, so it's Tom and Joan in the discussion. So I'm going to go through in, I'll just do it in alphabetical order. So, different line. Jeremy and Kim, that you don't have to have been at a meeting to approve minutes. Just that you have read them and you agree that they represent what was discussed. So I, I vote in agreement. Jeremy?
Yeah, okay.
Jim?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Kim?
Uh, Kim votes aye.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Matt?
Aye.
And Tom?
Tom votes yes.
And we're unanimous. And I'm waiting for one further motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hall?
I would like, and it's, it's 9:23 by the way. I can't, I can't remember the last time that I was on a meeting that we beat 9:30. I would like to move that we adjourn.
Joan?
Yes, seconds.
Any discussion? I will do it in reverse order. Tom?
Tom votes yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Kim?
Kim votes yes.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes and welcome to our new members.
Jim?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
Jeremy?
Jeremy votes yes.
And I vote yes. We're unanimous and we are adjourned. Thank you all. I think it was a very useful meeting. Safe travel to all.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Welcome.